Sorry.
Yeah, alright.
So, are you ready to?
You're ready.
Okay, alright. Time is six twenty-four. I call this meeting of the Godly Infinite Scored Order. Let's record show that a forum of board members is present. Meeting's been duly called and the notice of this meeting's been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. At this time, it's been a trip up in the offer of the table.
Thank you gentlemen. Gentlemen, fathers, thank you for allowing us just to gather. Gotta thank you for everyone that's here in the theme Thanksgiving. Thank you for your service and God, I just pray that you will be with the board as they're going through the training and able to make decisions for us as a school district. Gotta pray over everyone here that we go through the holiday season and glorify you. So just have a prayer, amen. Thank you. And Dr. Blak, I hope you'd have everyone participate in offering place.
For the pledges, we're gonna go on for the allegations to the bottom of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Blak. Alright, and next, we will have public participation. And we can fix our clock just a minute. I have, uh, Roosevelt. If you don't mind coming right up here. And this next will, you can obviously read the panel there.
Okay.
Okay, uh, she wanted to speak on Agenda Five A. Item.
Thank you for allowing me to get up to this week tonight. I would just ask some questions as you sit through this training tonight. What are you going to learn that is going to train you on representative government? You are elected officials. You represent the people in this community. You represent those who like to go. So my questions are, as you watch this training tonight, what are you gonna learn that represents the people you represent? What are you gonna learn that represents the Constitution that you all should have sworn oath to? That is my concern. Is this more group thing? That you're all united? Well, all but one. Because the behavior I have seen from this board has been appalling. And I want to know, do you really understand the Constitution and representative government? Because I don't think you do. So as you go through this training tonight, I would like you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alright, so, um, getting into our first agenda item. So first of all, um, this is our Team of Eight training. This is a requirement for Texas School Board members, primarily mandated by Texas Admin Code sixty-one dot one. Specifies that an annual team building session for the entire board and superintendent to improve group effectiveness. This comes from the Texas Education Code eleven dot one five nine, which gives the State Board of Education the authority to create a framework for school board development and continuing education. So, um, that's really the, the, the primary purpose for us doing Team of Eight training. Now, we do try and utilize this to our benefit in the fact that there is, uh, the way we've structured it is to have a legislative update. We wouldn't have to have a legislative update anyway. And so this is an opportunity to try to do that at the same time. So, the, the legislative update again comes from Texas Education Code eleven dot one five nine, which again mandates the, uh, the continuing education for trustees. So, we have asked, uh, Ms. Carrie Carter to be here with us. She's from, uh, uh, Region Eleven. We asked her to be here with us to walk us through the legislative update. We've got a, a couple of hours allocated for that. And then we'll also get into the, obviously, the second item on the agenda, and that's going over the District Improvement Plan. So, uh, with that, Ms. Carter?
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Carrie Carter and I am a TEA Registered Provider, which means I have been trained by the Texas Education Agency to support and train school boards. There are different levels of certification and I've worked through all of this, um, to be a governance coach. So, I am super thrilled to be here with you this evening. I have some information here. It just echoes what was already said, but kind of in a pictorial format. So, everything up here is the continuing, the required continuing education for a school board trustee. And there is a lot of it. When you're coming into this role, you may or may not know all these things that have to be done. As soon as you're elected, there's a three-hour local orientation that is provided by your superintendent, where you're learning all about your local board. Then there's the introduction to the Texas Education Course, which is one that we offer at Region Eleven. And then cyber security, public information apps, human trafficking, open meetings, and school safety. These are all kind of online offering. They are offered by the Attorney General, the Department of Information Resource, TA Learn. As we go through this evening, you're gonna learn about one new required training that's coming in April. And one that I suspect is probably going to show up as well. So, we'll talk about those as we go. But over here, you have team building. So, we're going to incorporate part of our team building this evening and we'll cover that. And then we're also doing this update to the Texas Education Code. Like I would've mentioned, um, all of these things are required and I'd just like you to see that. In addition, uh, Chapter sixty-one talks about the Board of Trustees' relationship. And it says the State Board of Education shall adopt a framework, the framework that you mentioned, for school board development that's used in structuring continuing education for school board members. So, it's not just random, you get to do what you wanna do. It is very prescribed of what goes on. And like I said, I'm a picture person, so here is kind of, um, the framework and the things that you can pick and choose from. Vision and goals is one of them. Then there's advocacy and engagement, progress and accountability. And that would be where your District Improvement Plan, um, it would monitor those things within what's going on academically within your district. And then synergy and teamwork, that's that, working together as a team. And you're seeing that you are a body corporate and you act as a team of, uh, seven board members and the superintendent. So, two of eight. And then that, that teamwork there and then systems and processes, having things operate strategically. And, uh, like a lot of my board training, I talk about systems and getting systems in place. Because as we do things, we want things to be sustainable. And we don't want to have to keep recreating things as we go. So, we wanna have systemic operations. So, this is the framework that we've mentioned, uh, so you have a little bit better understanding of that. But what we're going to start with is the legislative update. This legislative update is required training for board members after every legislative update. And so, um, this year, there were three thousand five hundred and sixty-two bills that were filed. And of those, not all of them became law. That's probably a good thing because three, over almost four thousand new laws would be a lot. Eleven hundred and fifty-five were signed by the governor and became law that way. And then one hundred and forty became law without supervision. There were a couple, I would say this was kind of, um, a legislature that focused on a couple really big things. And as we talk about some of these laws and we go through here, you're gonna, you're gonna hear some things that keep coming up. One of them is parents' rights. That was kind of a hot topic. And the other one was funding. School funding, but how they funded it. And then the third one was Senate Bill Two, which was their education savings or the voucher bill. And those were prob, that was probably the most, um, flashy one initially was getting that voucher bill pushed through and then getting the signature on that. And then House Bill Two was our funding bill, which is other, the other big one. And so, if you didn't know, um, so I said Senate Bill Two was the vouchers or the education saving, that ESA. And then House Bill Two was funding. The lower the number in these, the more importance that the legislature put on that bill. So, some of them you would see as like House Bill eleven ninety-five. Well, that's not as much of a big deal, maybe it's House Bill Two, the funding. So, um, just good information for you to be aware of. So, this is, um, kind of all the categories that we're gonna talk through today. It says page one hundred and twenty-seven. There were about a hundred and twenty-seven different bills that had something to do with education. We're not going to be here for eight hours. So, no, it's not, it wouldn't probably take us eight hours, but it would probably take four or five. And some of these bills don't really go into effect until next year and the year off. And so, um, kind of the ones that we've picked to focus in on are the ones that are here now, that are really impactful for you as a board right now. But if you scan that QR code, it will take you to a website. And on that website, you can get this PowerPoint with all of the slides. And you can get a PDF downloadable book that has the notes on all of these slides as well. So, there are these. And I will share this, uh, tomorrow when I make your certificate and send you the certificate. I will include the link for this as well. So, you'll get your certificates, you'll get your link. And that way, you have access to it. The next slide, you do not have to do this, we have a whole Team of Eight. I can take attendance that way. So, this is when I'm training multiple districts. I make everybody do their attendance. So, we're gonna get started with school safety and security and student health. I generally try to present without notes, but there is so much in this that I don't want to forget. I have some notes and so forgive me for flipping in my notes. You can see, we got the slide deck and I have probably setting eight to ten different trainings. Every time I sit in a training, I take notes in my book, um, to make sure that I am giving you all of the information that I know. So, there's so much here, I have to use my notes. My heart. So, we're gonna start with House Bill Six. And this is a discipline and telehealth, mental health services bill. And all of the slides will try to, I didn't create them. There is a lot of words on this slide and I'm not willing to read this slide to you. I'm going to look down and see things. If you look at the second bullet, it says it strengthens the work for teachers to remove students from class if they even one time interfere with instructions, demonstrate disruptive behavior, or engage in bullying. And this eliminates the requirement. Oh. Good call. Eliminates the requirement for, um, teachers to have lots of documentation for removal. So, what this does is if, now there are misconceptions here and that's what, that's what I really wanna address. If a kid is misbehaving, the teacher can ask to have the kid removed from the classroom. But the misunderstanding here is that that's a permanent removal and it's not. This law goes on to say, the district is going to have a committee and the purpose of that committee is to work to create a plan to return that child to class. It also says that on that committee, if the child is served by special education or by five oh four, that there has to be a representative on that committee that is knowledgeable of that child's disability. The goal is to get the child back in class. Kids have to be in class alone. And so, why is this important for board members? Well, teachers here, I can get this kid out of my class. And that's where it starts. And if they want to get upset, they're going to go to their administrators. They may talk to their friends. They may talk to you as trustee. And you need to remember, well, what's, what's your role? Your role is to encourage and to follow chain of training. It is also your role to know that the district has a committee and the committee's sole purpose is to get the kid back in class. Because if they're not in class, they're not going to work. So, this law also did a lot of other things. It removes mandatory DAP placement for e-cigarettes. The first time that a child has an e-cigarette, they can do ten days of IEDs. Now, as a board, you need to make this in your student code of conduct. So, um, that would be an update that you as a board, you can do.
So, tonight I wrote.
Uh huh.
When it says the effective date is June twentieth, so that is the effective date of this.
Yeah.
Ticker law.
Yeah.
It should have already been incorporated into our student code conduct.
It should have been, but, I mean, if it hasn't, you need to get that done. It has been, okay. Yeah. Should have been, but, you know, I mean, I've trained a lot of boards and they're like, oh, I don't know that we've done that yet. Great, get it done.
Is there a period? I mean. Obviously, we've already got it done, but I'm just thinking in general, is there some period of time that you have grace to get it in? If you haven't at a school?
I, I think my recommendation is always to get it done as soon as you know. There, there are some things that people are like, oh, we didn't know. And then most boards work with CASB. And CASB sends you updates. And I know right now, you are all probably in the middle of reading update one twenty, one twenty-six. And getting ready to vote on one twenty-six. The other thing is TEA has a website and you can Google TEA Legislative Update Website. And there's dates on there and TEA's guidance documents on all of these. And, you know, there's some that you're like, well, they should have the guidance out on that and it's just not there yet. So, it's a lot and, and they know it's a lot. But it's just CASB is really gonna take care of you to make sure that you're going to have those policies in place. That's really what you, what you pay them for is to get your policy. But I, but I did train a board two weeks ago, the week before Thanksgiving. And they're like, I don't think we've done that. I'm like, great, you need to do it. So, another thing that this law did is if you are a district of innovation, are, are you DOI? So, looking at your DOI plan, there are some districts, I don't know if you all did, but there are some districts that exempted themselves from Chapter thirty-seven. Chapter thirty-seven is this one. And this law came out and said, you can't exempt yourself from Chapter thirty-seven. So, if that was in your DOI, DOI plan, you have to go and reinvent that from your DOI. And we've already done that. So, you're, he, he's over here, we got that done, we got that done. So, this is good, this is good. A couple other things that are in here that this law changed. One of them is up until now, if a student was below third grade or a student was homeless, you could not give them out of school suspension. So, second grade, first grade, kinder, no out of school suspension. And if a child met the requirements for homeless. And so, that's, that's an interesting thing because sometimes when we think about homeless, we think about, oh, well, they're living on the street. And that's not the definition of homeless in Texas. There's lots of indicators. For example, one of the ones that I usually share with boards and feel like, oh, I didn't know that, is doubled up. And so, if two families live together in one house, so, when I was a kid, when my parents got divorced, we moved in and lived in my aunt's house for a little while because we didn't have anywhere else to live. We were doubled up. We had a house, we were supposed to be living there, everything was fine. But by Texas law of what homeless means, that is doubled up. And I would have been a homeless student. Now, we didn't even know that back then and I don't know that that was the case, but that, that's an example. And then.
Are those categorized as based on indicators or based on specific definitions that they meet the criteria to be classified that way?
There's, so these are the things that make you qualify as homeless.
Okay.
So, you have to meet those things. And that information, homeless is coded into your, um, schemes, which is your picture, um, data that basically represents everything there is to represent about students within your district. It's going to have all of their enrollment, it has all of your teacher information. It, it is the database that just holds everything. It's where our accountability rating, full data from. It's where our funding holds data from. So, it uses less of a detail to make sure it's accurate. How many homeless do we have? Sixty-seven, sure. Sixty-seven. Homeless is an interesting one because once you're coded that, you retain it for the full year, even if you are no longer homeless. So, you, if you need it and you get coded that, you maintain it for years. And then it's reevaluated at the beginning of the year. So, um, but this new law said, if they, those kids have conduct that is of immediate health and safety concern or repeated and significant classroom disruption, they can, they can now be suspended. So, it opens up that opportunity. If, if that is an appropriate discipline, decision for those children.
Almost are homeless.
You can now do it for homeless. You didn't used to be able to, but now you can. So, under third grade and homeless, now you can.
That's what the law changed.
Yep, that's the change.
Opened up to under third grade.
Right.
And homeless.
Yeah.
And so, the only other thing that I'd like to throw in here on this slide is all, none of this can trump federal law. And so, federal law says if a student is served by special education and they are misbehaving, they get to have what is called a manifestation determination review. We abbreviate it MDR because everything in education is not. And what that MDR is, is a review of the behavior and the student's disability to decide if the disability is the cause of the misbehavior. And so, all of these things can happen, but you still have to make sure you're following the and doing those, um, manifestation here. So, then we'll move on to House Bill one twenty-one. House Bill one twenty-one, uh, what this did is it said, any personnel that is hired as a security officer must complete school safety training no longer than ninety days after the start of their contract. So, they have to go through, um, some specific training. If your district, do you have security officers? SRO, okay. So, if you exempted yourself, which we have some districts in our regions that exempt themselves from having trained security officers or SROs. If you exempt yourself from that, you have to review that annually as a board and announce that you are exempting yourself from that. You don't, you have SROs. So, um, this isn't really one that pertains to you. Some of the pieces in here that probably do pertain to you requires that you have a safety plan for all extracurricular events. And provide map to your, um, police force of your security plan. Just like you would have a security plan for your buildings, having one for, here's what would happen during a football game. Here's, here's what would happen during a basketball game. Here's how we're going to evacuate the building. And then this one also requires the county sheriff to meet at least two times a year with the school district. There's not a lot here. It just kind of amended some pieces of things that were already out there. And then, um, really the big one is for our districts that aren't having security officers, they have to say that in a public meeting annually and agree that that's what they're gonna continue to. House Bill five forty-nine, this is the airway clearance device. Have you all purchased these already?
The prayer.
You already have them. So, this law just amended, um, the Education Code, Chapter thirty-eight. And what it did is it said that every district must purchase with either, uh, local fund or donation, at least one airway clearance device that is going to be present in areas where children are eating. And so, what this is, is it clears choking. I was training a board probably about a month ago and, um, mentioned this one and this superintendent said, we have them and we've already had to use them. So, you know, we can read these and we can say, oh, it's an unfunded mandate. But the reality is this is a safety tool. And potentially here in our region, um, a child is alive because this device has been there in their school. So, um, this is called the Weston Bryan Mandrell Act, named after a young man.
Before we move on, um, can somebody give a approximate number of how many staff would get trained to use the devices? I don't, to, I don't know if we have any specifically that. We have one on each campus and two of our officers have, uh, have device.
So, the requirement is one person that would be present that would know how to use it.
For one desk, for location. Okay.
Catch in the cafeteria, how about this one?
I would say, these are those plastic things you put on the table and pull it out and.
Correct the mouth pluners, as they call it.
Yeah.
I know we have. I know we have, uh, training for our staff every year on how to administer EpiPens. Would this not be indescribably developed, would this not be something that we could just incorporate into that training for, so that all staff members could be trained on it?
Yes.
I'm sorry. What's going on? If it saves a life?
Yes.
If it saves a life, yeah. Um, so household fourteen-eighty-one, I'm sure you've dealt with this one, and you, you've written your policy. Um, this was due by September eighteenth, and so, this is the cell phone bill. Um, basically what it's saying is, no cell phones during the school day. And, um, this includes cell phones, tablets, smartwatches, radio devices, and paging devices unless they are issued by the school. And so, if the school gives out tablets, then that's okay. It's just the child can't bring their own tablet. Um, and you've probably already put a policy in place, this was due several months ago. Um, the one thing that I will throw out here, um, just to squash any ideas that you might get along the way. Um, there is a district, not in our region, um, a little bit further east, and I, I really couldn't even tell you what district it was, I knew it, but I try not to remember these things, so I don't call people out, but I'm sure you could Google it. Um, there was a district that said, well, this says, no, they read it as not during instructional time. So they decided, their, their board decided they were going to allow children to have cell phones during lunch, and they said lunch wasn't going to be instructional time. Well, TEA got involved, and TEA said, well, you have to have this many minutes of instructional time, and you're reporting your instructional time as bell bells. But now you're saying, this time's not instructional time. You've got to deduct that non-instructural timeout when you're reporting your minutes. Um, so, it was, it was a board that thought they would get around it. Um, I, I...
They thought they found a loophole, and the loophole worked against them.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and I don't know who it was, like I said, I'm sure you could Google it, but the thing that I would caution you on there is like, it's really talking during the school day. Um, and if you start chunking out time and saying, well, this is an instructional time, we're gonna let them have it here, then you're gonna have to build schedules that it's, it's just gonna become a reporting, could become a reporting nightmare.
Our, our district actually did a great job, uh, we, we had already taken care of this before. They passed all the legislation, we had legislation, and we can't talk today, sorry.
We're gonna talk to you, yes.
That, um, I've been talking to patients all day. Um, but, and we kind of, and I was taking care of it, and they did a great job, and, and involved parents in the discussion and the presentations, and I, something we did very well, did right ahead of time before everybody else, so, right?
Yep. The only thing that I would tell you is, so there was, like, when this first happened, there was so much noise, and it's really quieted down. But, um, there was the noise of, well, you can get a doctor's note that says you can have a cell phone. And so, a friend of mine that's a superintendent, um, he said that he got a doctor's note, and the doctor's note said, my, this child has severe anxiety and must have their cell phone at their death. So, if they start feeling anxiety, they can text their parents. And the superintendent said, well, hold up. If your child is having that much anxiety, somebody in our building needs to be aware of that, so that we can support them and help them contact the parents, um, to make sure that, that we're meeting the needs of the child. Like, that's not, if somebody's having anxiety and panic attack, we don't want them sitting in a desk with no one else knowing, texting. Like, that's not the best way to handle that. Um, what it was really, what that piece of the law was really talking about was, say that I wear a Blue Coast monitor on my arm, and my Blue Coast monitor alerts on my phone because I'm a diabetic. Well, then I need to have my phone so that I get that alert, so I know that, hey, I need to take in the windows, or I need to adjust my phone, or whatever I need to do. Um, it's really more that than these little loopholes that people are looking for. Um, and I don't know if y'all have had any issues really, like I said, early on, there was a lot of chatter and a lot of parents, and most of what I've heard from administrators, from principals, from superintendents is, it's not, um, the kids, the kids are fine, it's the parents. And so, when you said you had parent meetings and you educated the parents and you build that understanding of, hey, this is why we're doing this, um, that's exactly the way to handle it. And it's also good for you as trustees to know, because when a parent gets mad, who are they going to call? They're going to call you, and what's your role? Your role is to advise them to follow chain of command. Um, reach out to the principal, go with the chain of command. Um, and you probably know this, and this is not part of this training, but if you start getting involved, if it then becomes a grievance, you have to recuse yourself from hearing that grievance. You can't hear it if you provided consultation. So if, if I'm a trustee and I start providing consultation to him, and he decides he doesn't like it and he follows a grievance, I now have to step away, and I can't hear his grievance. Um, and so, you know, it's just good for you to know, and, and I just like to throw those educational things in as we come to law. But I'm glad to hear this is going pretty well here. Did you do the pouches?
No. Uh, I think for the most part, I don't, I can only think of about three districts in our region that did the pouches. Um, and one of them told me the other day that the kids spend an exorbitant amount of time trying to figure out how to break them. And you can buy magnets online on Amazon that will open the pouches. But it also could potentially ruin your cell phone. Uh, your mom and dad.
Do what?
I bet their mom and dad would be acting about that.
Oh, yeah. Were you gonna, mom and dad calling? Thought, oh, we sit away around him. Not really. Um, so liability of public school and professional employees. Um, this is really around the employees in a public school, and it has to do with sexual misconduct and failure to report. Um, this is not really new, it was just really broad, and now it's really specific. Okay? Um, this includes superintendents, administrators, serving as educational leaders. It includes principals, chief operating officers. Now here's, here's where this really gets into it. Teachers, substitute teachers, supervisors, social workers, school counselors, nurses, teachers aides, bus drivers. Okay, so we've been to a lot of people that you probably are thinking, okay, well, yeah, all those people work in the school. But then we have ed prep programs due to. So we're talking about student teachers, school board members, that's y'all. Any contracted employee who provides services to the district or charter school, that's me. Um, I am now part of this group of people, as is anybody at ESC Region eleven. So we've all been trained on this, um, reporting, these reporting rules. Um, a public school is grossly negligent, negligent or reckless, or engaged in intentional misconduct. If you hire, supervise, or employ a professional employee, then is found guilty of sexual misconduct or failure to report child abuse. And so, what this is saying is, you need to be very, very well aware of the people that you are hiring to be in your district, and checking to make sure that they have never engaged in sexual misconduct or failure to report, uh, child abuse. Um, if you are applying for a job and you fail to disclose that by an act of admission, then you would be named as a defendant in a case, and it's that person, not the district. So, and it is up to five hundred thousand dollars for each claimant in that. So, all staff needs to be, um, trained. The board needs to complete training. It is the, um, child abuse training that we offer through ESC Region eleven, and it's now available on TDA Learn. Um, it's free training. So if you haven't sent the board's data on that, it's an online training, you need to make sure you've done that. Um, the other thing that I lead into here is that all educators within our district should be encouraged to participate in an organization that provides them liability insurance. Um, so Texas teachers, ATPE, whichever of those. Um, it gives them counsel and liability insurance. And it's pretty cheap. I don't, I don't know exactly what the cost is. Um, it's a monthly fee, and it's, it's negligible. My husband's volunteer, um, and he joins for the protection that we provide. Uh, and there's another slide later that talks about more of this. So, failure to report child abuse, um, if you suspect child abuse or neglect, and you fail to report, the statute of limitations is four years. So, if you fail to report, and four years down the road, it's found out that you failed to report, you can still be held liable. Um, it can result in you, a teacher, being replaced on the do not hire list. So TEA has the do not hire list. Um, it can result in a five hundred to ten thousand dollar penalty. It can be a state jail felony, which is served up to two years in jail. So, um, if you suspect child abuse or child neglect, you better be reporting. Um, and there was a question up here, and this is not a specific bill that addressed it, but I'll mention it and we'll mention it again. Um, there is another bill that changed those timelines pretty drastically. And, um, it used to be that a superintendent might get a report, and the superintendent had seven days to report this, which gave the superintendent some time to do some investigating to find out if it was a legitimate report. Uh, teacher misconduct is what that one really is. And now it's forty-eight hours, which basically eliminates his ability to do anything but get online and report. Um, and then let, let it go down the route of investigating for that. Um, but that's on another slide. Yes. Uh, so this is, I didn't put these in here in this order either, because I want that slide next, and it's non-competitive. Um, and I guess I've done this so many times that I'm like, I guess I could change it, but this is how it was given to me, so I, I'll keep this one. Um, so I guess we go heavy and then a little bit not so heavy, maybe that's the thought of this. Uh, you want participation for non-involved students. And so, uh, this is an interesting one, have you all, you've already taken care of it? Um, the interesting piece here that I looked at is, if you don't do anything, you are allowing it. You're allowing homeschool students to participate. Um, which, so you're having to opt out, which seems a little bit backwards sometimes. You would think this would be an opt-in, and it's an actual opt-out. So, um, the board, not the board, the district gets fifteen hundred dollars per student per activity if you choose to allow homeschool students to participate in UIL activities. Um, a good thing to know is, if you say no, we don't want to let homeschool students in our district participate, then they can go to the next closest district, distance-wise, door to door. And, um, I think Weatherford High School is allowing it. I'm, I'm pretty sure they are, yeah. Um, they are, okay. Um, so, I don't know who else is around you all, but let's say Glenrose was, and Weatherford was. I don't know about Glenrose. But that child, depending where they live in your district, they would measure distance to Glenrose, to Weatherford, and whichever one was closer, that is where they could go. So they don't get the, oh, I'm gonna go to South Lake Herald. No, it's the next closest proximity district to where you live. And really, Weatherford is one of the only ones that I've heard of that's allowing it.
Heard previously. That's not, basically, you know, being that...
Not a change.
Not a change. Um, UI, okay, so we talked about this one. The next one is CBO on buses. And so, this law requires three-point safety harnesses on all school buses regardless of their age. And so, um, you have a couple options. This opened up on November eleventh in Sentinel. Sentinel is our, um, security reporting system, uh, for the state. And, um, there was a to the administrator address that came out about this. In Sentinel, you have to go in and you can say, hey, we in the district deem this to be financial, not financially feasible, to put three-point harness safety belt in all of our buses at this time. Before, uh, Dr. Deere can go in and do that in Sentinel, you as a board need to, in public meetings, state we cannot financially do, do this at this time. And then state the dollar amount of what it would cost. Um, I am hearing anything from twenty thousand on off to outfit a bus, depending on the age of the bus, and if the seats all have to be replaced in order to get the three points harness safety belt. Um, do you know how many buses, y'all? How to...
We're in, yeah, we're in the, the process, and we have nineteen buses that do not. Um, and, uh, we had a discussion on it, the first discussion, and not, where it's not made official decision on it yet, for us to...
Um, and so then, what will happen with that report is it will go back to the next legislative session. So, in January of twenty-seven, yeah, January twenty-seventh, um, that report, the amount that it would cost for the state to be able to do that, will go back to the legislature for them to decide how it's going to be funded. Um, if it's going to be funded, where that money is gonna come from. But that is actually open now for you to, to report, once you make a public, in a public meeting. So here's that slide that I was talking about, um, that I wish would, after that other one. Um, really what this did is, it amended some, uh, criminal procedures and lots of the, um, Education Code. And so, it took the definition of child abuse, and it added in improper relationship between educator and student. Um, so that is now defined as child abuse. And it went on to say, some red flags might seem like improper communication. And it went on to say some red flags might seem like improper communication. Giving rides, giving gifts, getting overly involved in a child's life. And getting to the point where you're creating emotional dependence upon that, that child or that teacher. And so, that improper communication is really the one that I lean into. And teachers just should not text children. Plain and simple, period. End of the day, teachers should not be texting children. If they are having communication with children. They should be using some sort of app that tracks that communication. Do you all use, parents square, perfect. That is actually one of the better, probably the best one out there. There's another one. But parents square tracks it all. And anybody can monitor it at all times. It's, it's there. This is also the law that shortens the timeline for teachers from forty-eight hours to twenty-four hours. So if a teacher suspects child abuse, they have twenty-four hours to report. Just practice, when I was a campus administrator. If a teacher came to me and said, I think there's child abuse going on at home. I would literally open up my computer and say, sit right here right now and report. Let's get it taken care of. You don't have to do that, but it is the teacher's responsibility. Now, the teacher's told the principal, and the principal needs to also report it to the superintendent. And the superintendent was, priority said, decreased from seven business days to forty-eight hours. The superintendent reports to SBC with the teacher, which is the State Board of Education. They report to SBC and to TDA and to the police. Now, if you have district police officers, do you have a district police station? Like department?
Department, yeah.
So reporting to them does not count. You have to report to the city or the sheriff. And so teachers just need to be aware of that. It needs to go outside of your school district. And then it also needs to be reported to the Department of Family and Protective Services. So, lots of reporting. And then just something that I learned in one of my trainings. TDA has a misconduct portal that your superintendent has access to. To report teacher misconduct. And, or misconduct of anybody. And so, if he has suspected misconduct of anybody. Let's say it's one of those contract people, or a student teacher, or somebody that's even here doing construction work. He actually has access to the DPS back there. To look up their social security information to report that as well. You're supposed to have it. But I say that because to me, that, that just kind of shows how serious they're taking it. Like it's, it's not, like they're giving him the authority to get the information off of anybody that comes within his district. That is suspected of child abuse or maltreatment of children, to report it. They're giving him the avenue to do that. Which, to me, that really just speaks to the seriousness of everything.
Well, it is serious.
It is, it is serious.
The safety of our kids.
It is serious.
That kind of misconduct just can't be tolerated.
But they, they've created it where it's easy to do. And then I wrote down that this law really expanded reportable instances. Physical abuse, threat of violence, engaging or soliciting in romantic or sexual relationships. Inappropriate communication again, and then just in general, failing to maintain that. So, just a lot of information there. It's really about to creating a stopgap where if teachers get caught in something, they quit and they leave before, and they go somewhere else. This is creating a stopgap where that's not allowable. Which is a good thing. So here, you mentioned the CPR, the physi later, ECU pen, all of those trainings. This law really just amended some chapter twenty-two and thirty-eight code. And what it did is it specified everybody that must have CPR and AED training. Nurses, coaches, athletic directors, band directors, cheerleading sponsors, and athletic trainers. Plus student athletic trainers, all of them have AED and CPR training. So, basically, that's about anybody that's going to work with a child outside of the, the database. FFA, sponsors would fall into this group. Anybody that's going to take on the children places should be trained in it. You also must have a designated cardiac response team. Which you probably already have, headed up by your nurses. And so there's, there's not a lot of new information here. This one is near and dear to my heart. When I was a teacher, in probably my fourth year of teaching. One of my students was out running the track one morning, collapsed and died. Come back to say, long story short, had there been an AED, it would not have saved his life. Because of the way his heart ruptured and it would not have saved his life. But there are probably a lot of instances where those things do save lives. I know there are. And so, this one is one I, you know, I'm very much in favor of. These and the ECU pens and the Narcan. Do y'all have Narcan available? Head shaking. As a board, you may already know this, but like if you administer Narcan to someone and they don't need it. It will not in any way hurt them. And so if they're displaying symptoms. And you call nine-one-one and you administer the Narcan. And that wasn't what was causing them symptoms, that will not, it will not harm them in any way, anyway. If they're pregnant, it will not harm the baby. Like, there's no reason to not support the use of Narcan. And it's a big one. My son and I, my son is twenty-one, I was talking to some of you. We were, we were talking about this. My son was in a fraternity. He went to college in Arkansas, was in a fraternity. And his fraternity handed out Narcan to people who weren't keeping them in classes. He, he's like, I just, we bought it as a fraternity and that was what we did to get the word out about it. So we were talking about that at the end of this. So you can have open carry of a handgun by a uniformed, by a uniformed school marshal. So if you choose to do the school marshal program, which you all don't. It's always good to know this. Because if you're in another district and you see somebody open carrying. As long as they're uniformed, wearing something that you know they're a school marshal, they can open carry. So this one I suspect is going to like, get a little bit bigger now that we're in basketball season. Football season's outside, you got lots of room. Basketball season, we're in tight little confined spaces, so. I suspect this is without warning, no warning. Somebody can get ejected from a UIL by an administrator or by a referee. So what's in, what, I mean, it's under there in the action item. Inform parents, coaches, sponsors, and make sure people know. Because here's what's gonna happen. I'm the parent at the basketball game, making a fool of myself. And the referee ejects me, and on my way out the door, whom I follow. My buddy, I just got ejected. And he's gonna say, can't bill twenty-nine twenty-nine says. You don't have to get a warning. Sorry, buddy. Behave.
Glad it doesn't say clapping loudly.
So we're gonna move on to assessing accountability. Can it bill thirteen? This is a low number one. And this is the school district library book and parents rights bill. And there is a lot of things in here. The biggest one that I would say is you must have a committee that talks, that reviews what books go in your library. Have to have a committee. A process for doing this. You already do, I'm sure. All the districts already have this. You must have it. And then the parents rights piece, there's basically two things here. And if you have the checkout system, this is already happening. But just for you as a board member to know, the parent can say, hey, parents can't check out Judy Bloom books. So please don't let her check those out anymore. And that's in place, so when I walk up to the counter, then say, oh no, sorry, baby mama said no more Judy Bloom books. And then the other side is if I want to go online and look up what books my child is checking out, I can do that. The best story is a lawyer that works for one of the education, he's an educational lawyer. He said, he started getting all these emails about the books that his child was checking out. Your child checked out these books. Your child checked out these books. And they were How to Adopt a Yellow Lab. How to, um, raise, how to train the yellow lab. And he was like, we're not adopting the dog. And my son is out here checking out all these books about how to adopt the dog. He's like, we are not interested in adopting dogs. So that's pretty funny. Probably not the intent of the law, but you, it really drives some idea that the parents, they know what options are making.
Is often the ask, is it, do we have that through Skyward or?
No, it's a.
Is that the same system where they can go in and request for a book to be open and reviewed to see if it should maybe not be in our library?
That's different.
There's a separate obligation for that, but apart from this, also requires that we post a list of many new books that we add tomorrow on every for thirty days. So we've actually now listed it's out on our website, and with our looking through it now, that will come to you guys on December four.
The other thing is, kind of an unintended, you know, sometimes they have laws in place. And then there's unintended consequences from those laws. What is the unintended consequence is really around classroom libraries. And whether teachers have to catalog all those books and readers and all those things that they have looking at the classroom. I'm not an attorney, and I don't even play one on TV. But what I've kind of learned along the way is if our teacher's classroom library, our books came as pieces of our curriculum, adopted material. So a lot of times we adopt H R M as our reading program. And H R M gives us our reading program, and then they give us a classroom library. As part of that, that is part of our adopted material. They do not have to be law. What I have heard from attorneys is be careful if you have teachers that just have big libraries of books where kids get to just pick for. That would be. Is it a way of getting around? Really, the question was, is that a way of getting around the law of having systems in place? You have systems in place, so adhere to your systems that you have in place. But I'm not an attorney, so if you have specific questions, I would definitely reach out to you.
I have a question. If you have a teacher that has a classroom library, which I'm sure a lot of elementary teachers more so. All of them I could guarantee will probably.
Yeah.
For an elementary teacher, you have books in your classroom. Do our teachers have the ability to reference those locations through our library? Does that make sense? So they know.
Cross-reference.
Well, we had, parents are up in the know.
Yeah, cross-reference what they have in their classroom, what we already have in our library. Is it approved? Is it?
Yeah. We could, we could do that.
I'm just kind of thinking. I mean, I wouldn't wanna abolish a teacher from having a library in her classroom. I don't think that serves the purpose, but.
As long as there are books that are available through our library, then they should be.
I agree, yeah.
Exactly. They would, the only thing is that then when the kid's gonna check it out, it's not going through the checkout process where the parent has the restrictions. Is that where that problem would lie? Probably.
But it's more about getting informed and, and then know, like, yeah, yeah, there's like a level of transparency.
It's, it's definitely an unintended consequence of this law. That T, now I haven't been on TDA's website today, but they haven't really given any straightforward guidance on it.
But then did I? The teacher had knowledge of giving library that was lost for a child in the classroom.
Would the teacher know what, anything that had been restricted for a child?
Yeah, not unless they had access to the follow-up system. Which is really restricted to our, our C L O stack. Of course, a lot of teachers have deep detail. And I'm surprised, if a teacher beyond the data report. Here's my classroom foster, and that foster for the classroom, the cost of that was to any parent that said, hey, I don't want to read any, any of those books. We could, we could run a report to get the classroom teachers, so that people know, hey, this freaky teen, I need to be aware of her, if you don't want her, you know, to read this book.
I think that could be similar to like, do you like your, do you approve the head of teacher, the head of teacher, your students' picture taken? Like if the, like a, that's way more simplistic, like you just check box, the name of the school. If they have any hikes for my elementary teacher.
Like, I'm like, I know the amount of books that were in my classroom, but I still knew. I know what I had that didn't have in my classroom, if that makes sense, you know?
True. Cause I think what I'm hearing, a lot of us are not wanting to take away classroom libraries from teachers. But we also have to respect the parents' rights. Yeah, we have to give parents rights and we have to follow the law. So how can we? Like to be something that you just not get too. Down in the weeds, yeah, wait for that guidance from TDA. Because, right, might need some, a couple months.
Yeah. It kind of comes out of it. Could, could the administration also reach out to our attorneys to find out about this as well?
When, when is their guidance?
And when, what, what way can we merge classroom libraries with our libraries in that reporting process?
If we have a committee, if we have a committee that already does the vetting of the books for the library, why can't you see them in the classroom and say things in my?
We're going to have a top roar of, like, elementary teachers.
And that's all. We're trying to support.
You are. And not. Her plan tonight is right now, though, is wait and see what they give guidance on, because I think this can, I mean, it's going to no ball into.
And that's really what Ken Kinnaman is talking about. Exactly. And wait and see what TDA's guidance. And wait and see what T A's guidance on this really comes out. Um, because like I said, there's another law that we'll talk about and they, they put these laws in place and then things happen and you're like, oh, no, no, no. Um, so.
This is a great example.
Yes, um, so special education funding reform. Um, this one, there's really what I would tell you with this, and we're not gonna spend a lot of time talking about this. Um. They are going to fund students, so students that receive special education services. Every student starts out at sixty-one, sixty, right? Good, thank you. Come on, somebody, somebody can find out that's the right number. Um, that's their, that's the funding.
A law.
A law, yes. The basic law is sixty-one, sixty. If you receive special education services, then it goes up. The dollar amount goes up. Um, based on the intensity of services that the child re- receives. And so that is changing. And we just need to make sure that we're coding all of that stuff in P E. Because that is how that is reported. And I will tell you and your team back there, we have people that are getting ready to do a lot of training at the service center in January. And so tune in because they're about to start helping y'all make sure that that's coded correctly. Um.
What's the definition of that thought? Is it like, is it five oh three on the definition of special education funding?
Where.
So just the very top, special education funding, with a five oh three.
Five oh four.
Oh, five oh four, sorry.
Five oh four.
I've been thinking of you just meeting, she's like, I don't know.
No, no, so this specifically talking about. Special education.
Five oh four behavior, this would be like um, an I E P.
It's not.
Yeah.
It's not all being.
Yeah, five oh four, five oh four can be a, five oh four can be a lot of things.
My kid. Not all of them. It's okay.
Five oh four.
It's not an education.
Well, in order to qual, in order to qualify for five oh four, you have to have an educational need. Um, so you can, you can serve a student through five oh four. But their behavior or their medical diagnosis or whatever it is, maybe they just have a reading disability. But they can be served through five oh four, but you have to have an educational need. And so you can't. You can't just be five oh four if you don't just. Yeah.
I was only saying five oh four was uninvented. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
But like, um, they have A D H D, but my A D H D doesn't impact my ability to learn. I just have A D H D, but I don't have a medical, not medical. Educational need. I don't necessarily qualify for five oh four. So it has to, I have to be able to have a educational need in order to qualify for five oh four. Five oh four is um, actually is um. Probably technically should be a little bit harder to qualify for than special education. Um, and a lot of times we have it reverted in public school, not, not got the I D specifically, but just in public school. Um, but no, this is specific to students receiving special education.
But also could you have someone who has a five oh four, students that had a five oh four, but they don't necessarily meet the criteria for the sped. Funding?
Yeah, you would, you would not meet the criteria for sped funding if you're.
Right, that's the I E P, correct?
Yeah. So it's the difference between a I A P and a I E P. And the I A P is a common, an individual accommodation claim. Oh, it's a good test to mine. Um, but what I need you to know is. It is, we gotta get it correct because we're getting money based on the intensity of certain books. So really what, what you need to know here is the kids get lots of time from our teachers. You're going to get more money to help.
But also they don't know the rules. The rules aren't written.
Yeah.
Just as a reminder.
But it's why our team staff is still very vitally important.
Well, that too, but T E A will write. T E A will write the rules at the end of the year for funding, so.
You can't do anything without it.
It's gonna be tricky, yeah.
Okay, um, so this one is the virtual and hybrid learning. Uh, if you want to do a virtual school or a hybrid school, you can. Um. You get A D A funding, you don't get A D A, A D A funding, you get enrollment-based funding. Um. There's a window open, it closes in a couple of days if you want to apply for grants to do this. Um. It's just an option. Um, T E A is going to begin collecting data on chronically absent students. So uh, this is, it's bunged out for us. It says a student is chronically absent for more than ten percent of the school year. And um, if they fail to attend school without excuse for ten or more days or partial days within a six-month period. Um, they have to be identified and coded in P E. Uh. Why? We don't know yet. But the legislature wanted to collect this data. Um. I think it's gonna come up on tru- and this is pure speculation, that truancy, A D A funding, all of those kinds of things. Um.
It all comes back to money.
It all comes back to money and accountability. Um. You know, when they start collecting data, I just start thinking, okay, how's this going to have impact this in our accountability, our R D A, a lot of those other. Uh, so this one's interesting, we're in December and this is supposed to be done by December. So the commissioner of education is going to come up with a standardized G P A calculation. For all across the whole entire state of what is getting weighted now. So. Yeah. Our A P classes, are they gonna be weighted? Our dual credit classes, how are they going to be weighted? Are dual credit core classes going to be weighted the same as our dual credit um, career and tech classes? Then what about pre-A P, what about honors? Um, what about classes that are taken in junior high? How does that play into it? It's going to come from the commissioner by the end of December supposedly. Um, haven't heard anything else on it other than the legislature said. As soon as practicable. And the T E A guidance guidelines, they expect you to in December twenty twenty-five. All I can say is I hope they offer a phase in for this. And so it starts with like the incoming freshman next year. It doesn't start with everybody, because if it starts with everybody. It's gonna.
Integrity of what's already been created.
I'm, I mean, I just worry about.
Check some rules. Off the outside.
They should probably start with the seventh graders. So some schools offer, uh, I mean, yeah, yeah, anyway, so we could talk about that. I, I hope that they have a phase in, I don't know. Um. What does this mean for you as a board member? If they don't have a phase in, the valedictorian's mama is going to be telling.
Ex valedictorian.
Exactly, right.
The ex valedictorian's mind, the one who split it at the last minute is gonna be. So um, you know, just, just something to be aware of, it's coming. Uh, so let's talk about governance a little bit. Um. You've probably been doing all these things already because they happened on September first. Uh, your um, agendas must be posted at least three business days prior to the date of the meeting. And so um. Y'all on a quarterly week, are you? Okay. Basically, that's been the biggest question, like if we don't have school on Fridays and Friday counts. And the, the general consensus is no. So if you're having a Monday meeting, you have to post the Monday. The week before, so that they're posted Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which are your business days. Um.
Even if the business offices, they're open on a quarterly week?
Like.
Friday.
On the Friday, you know what I mean, like that's just when you.
They, they leave these interpretations there. Aren't you still making a bunch of money?
Well, yeah, sure, maybe they need their jobs.
I've just heard.
I just hear that and I'm like, but that's a business day.
Yeah.
Still business happening in the office.
Know how some of the districts that are on quarterly week are, are the admin offices and business offices open or?
Most of them are.
Say, okay.
They're.
A whole district. They're posting, they're posting a full weekend event. Um, additionally, when you post those. Um, you have to, if you are going to discuss your budget, you have two options. You can post a budget with your agenda. Or you can have your budget posted on your homepage of your website. It can't be buried into your website, it has to be on the homepage. So the budget either needs to be attached every time you have a meeting, if you're gonna talk about budget. Or it needs to be on your district homepage of your website. And if you're going to um. A notification must also include a tax payer impact statement showing the median value homestead property. Comparison on your tax. So if this budget passes, this is the impact that it would have on a median value home within.
Budget amendments as well, or just when we. On the, the main.
Oh, but primary budget.
So I'm confused.
Budget.
That confused me. Um, so our budget, how is that if the tax rate is fixed in their own value? The values are established, how would our budget impact them at all?
If your tax rate changes. As part of your budget.
Oh, I see, but then you could, that would require a vote.
It would require a vote.
Okay.
But that, before it can go to a vote, that has to be posted for.
Oh.
For everybody.
I see, I see, okay, I'm intrigued. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Good question.
So we've been posting on Tuesday before the following Monday. Or.
And you have school on Friday for your book, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, A I, so A I is artificial intelligence. And there is a new um, requirement that employees are trained on artificial intelligence. And um, this is one, remember at the beginning, I said maybe some new board training? Right now, no. But don't get too excited. I think it's probably coming. Um, as a, you know how you have the every other year trainings? I can see this becoming one of your every other year board trainings eventually, right now, no, it's just for employees. But I suspect it's probably coming down the pipe. Um, because we don't have time to talk about it tonight, but there are so many decisions you as a board really need to think around. A I. Um, grading, how is it used? What are the discipline, like, what are the discipline consequences for kids? Using chat G P T to write their papers? How do teachers know? Um, so all of those things are out there, it's just gonna, it's, it's kind of.
If we don't already have some of that stuff in place, we're behind the curve, I would assume.
Yeah.
If we don't already have some, some disciplinary stuff, some, some vetting, some ways to detect A I and all that, we're already.
We have all of, some of those things in place, but we also have a committee that's meeting right now that will bring in a H T in January with a full set of guidelines. Um, recommendations for. As accepted permits for use inside of the district and outside of district. Martinston's been vetting with the COVID components and that kind of stuff, so we'll have a full update in January from our A I. Central district, it's gonna be in the last eight months.
Still worried on that schedule when it comes to A I, everybody's.
Well, for sure, they are, they'll all be so fast.
I know, yeah, we're always gonna be working on something.
Well, but I, what I'm suggesting is that we don't wait around on T E A to come up with whatever, we already, we need to be proactive about it.
It is, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
It can't really, if we kind of follow what universities are doing, there is an absolutely zero tolerance. I mean, like, no tolerance whatsoever, you will fail class, you can be expelled from university, I mean, like, I'm not saying we're expelled students, but like. It's, it has to be a zero tolerance policy, it can't have any. It can't have any grade in it.
Um, so changing the date.
I agree, that's why.
Your thing, I've happened to be able to.
I wanna embrace and lead into it.
Properly.
Yeah.
Not use it to not learn. Like, because it can't actually aid in your learning.
It, it enhances, it, it can enhance it.
Your education along the route properly. But if you're using it just to get around learning, there's not, then, no. Well, and we need to, we need to educate our teachers on ways that they can use it. Because I didn't know this until just a couple months ago, I learned this. There's a way in Google that I can see how much of something was copied and paper, like pasted into a document. Well, I can't accuse the child of cheating and say, I think you cheated. Because you let A I wrote, write this, but I sure can mark the kid and say. This whole chunk of your paper was copied, pasted, was like pasted in here at one time. And I have evidence of that. And so giving that teacher, the teachers, now the teacher is not saying, I think you cheated and you let A I, A I write.
Right.
Write this for you. But the teacher is just saying, I have evidence that you copied and pasted this whole chunk of.
Eighty-nine percent of your paper.
Where did it come from? So it gives the teachers some leverage too, where it's not reward versus the cancel.
It will evolve into, into a side of your source or even, even like a link to where it came from, it will evolve into that.
But just, it's just, it, it's huge. And I think it's gonna, going to just keep getting bigger and bigger. Um, changing dates of election for officers. So this is actually a deadline, it's December thirty-first. If you want to move from the May elections to November, you can do that. Um, it's a one-time thing. If you wish to do that, you must have a transition plan in place.
Well, the date on that one's significant in the future, that's not this year, correct? Or did I misunderstand?
Uh, twenty thirty. But it's a one-time move. If that is something.
On the election for officers on the board, like, is that what you're saying? Is that?
No, electoral, trustee.
Not off, officers.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm reading that as.
Election of the board.
Gotcha.
If you wanted to move all of your elections to November.
And also potentially go through your term report.
So um. That's. That's your discussion. Um. This is one of those laws, and I'm like, really, we have to have a law that says this? Um. But then I'm like, well, somebody must have done it, so that, that's why we now have a law. Um, probably doesn't really mean much for you, but um. Your, one thing to say, and there's a couple things here. Um, there has to be a place on your ballot application. That says, I am not a registry sex offender. So they must um. Mark awareness of that on their application.
At least for place of.
Okay, so. So, not on the ballot, I said ballot, but on.
The application. There are a place to mark it being had for them. But I guess registry sex offender is not a thing. They got two different things.
I don't know that, but I would just.
I would say that would kind of be, I think, how they. That's probably, kind of like that, but. Not a theory.
It's like, that's a great question, and nobody'd ask me that one, so. Um, I will find out, just because I'm now curious, but um. Yeah. Like I said, to me, this is one that I'm like, why do we have to have a law that says this?
Oh, we didn't. Uh, since elections, those applications will be coming up in the future. So we make sure that we have that on our application. I'm not sure if we already did that.
I could agree with that. I could be thinking of a box, but you're not about. So instead of, I told you, this was the boundary bill, the Education Safety Act. Um, the comptroller has put in plan up, that plan was up. Uh, starting August twenty-second, it was up for thirty days for. for public comment, it is done being in public comment. We are just waiting for that plan to become, here is the comptroller's plan, um, uh, how do you qualify for a, for a ESA? Who qualifies? How is that money allowed to be spent? How is it going to be paid out? Um, what can it be spent on? Can it be spent on just tuition or tuition books? Uh, transportation? We, we don't, we're just waiting. Um, so not a lot of information. Uh, there was a TAA that came out in November on TEA's website with a little bit of information. Um, what I would, oh, um, one thing here, homeschool is eligible for up to two thousand dollars per year. That's kind of something that was buried in there. Um, and then, um, considerations at the board, because, you know, I don't know, I don't know that people are going to get vouchers and leave public school and go to private school in the math numbers that maybe was originally bought, I just, I just don't know. Um, the community I live in, I don't think it's gonna happen, because we don't have a lot of private schools available. And parents have to provide transportation usually to get kids to private school, and they're not able to do that. So, but as a board, think about like, what impact would this have on funding? If we have this many kids start leaving? How does that impact our enrollment? And then as a board, what do we do for advocacy and communication within our community? And creating a back to that board framework? Like, what are we doing to build up our district? Like, you want your district to look like a sound, solid, great place for kids to come get educated. So what are you doing as a trustee and the board to build that? Um, how are you advocating for your community? How are you speaking positively about your IAC? Um, how are you being out there, being involved? And we, I think, a couple of us were talking about, you know, my time from when I was in the district to now being a superintendent, when I was in the district, I, I was expected to be at everything, representing my district and promoting my district and on Facebook and social media to promoted my district. As a trustee, promoting the district. Like, you were elected to represent your district, be proud to be a trustee and represent your district positively.
So one thing I just noticed on here is references the annual funding for students under eighty-five percent of the average state law fund. So am I interpreting that correctly, that that would be eighty-five percent of the sixty-one, sixty?
Yeah, unless they're getting.
Unless there's some, uh, additional. All right, thank you.
So, um, just, you know, advocate for your district. Be positive. Talk up the things you're doing. Talk up your FSA, talk up your, um, band and your fine arts, and your beautiful fine arts building and just everything that you have that private schools around you don't have to offer. Um, so Senate Bowl twelve is another big one, it's on parents' rights. What you need to know here is, this one got real sticky in the fall, and I think it's because of the timeline of when this rolled out. It rolled out after most people had already done all of their online form. And I think that once, as a district, we can't put these things in online forums, it's gonna be easy peasy going forward. It just was difficult issues. Um, there was counselors and nurses that were really concerned, like, can I give kids banding? Can I give kids um, medication, like, what can I do? Counselors, I have counselors calling me and saying, well, can I counsel a kid on what classes they can take? If their parents haven't signed permission for me to counsel them? Yes, yes, you can. You're counseling them on academic thing, it's fine. Um, DEA then came back out in September and said, healthcare services include dispensing meds, and that requires an opt-in. So if a parent wants to school district to dispense meds, they must sign up. Short-term, non-invasive, first aid type thing, like Band-Aids, cleaning the bloody knees from a fall at Rita's. Um, consent exists without opting out. So there's some that TA said is opt-in and some that is, you're giving consent if you don't opt in.
Not giving prescription medication, not giving vaccines, not giving things like that, common sense, they're not doing that. Those are opt-ins. Yeah. But the stuff that makes sense, like, as you said, Band-Aids, I.
Yes.
Tylenol, they hit their head, you give them a phone call is pretty much what our protocol is, so.
I don't think. And TDA has a draft of the rules that they recommend for this as well, um, policy rule. Um, and then the other piece that's in here is your grievance form must be, um, posted online. Uh, public comments should be at the beginning, uh, pieces of your meeting. This is kind of a great thing, it doesn't really come out and say, has to be first, it just has to be at the beginning. And so depending what I have going on, um, it might be the second thing on my agenda. If I'm doing recognitions, doing recognitions, I have a lot of parents and a lot of kids there to get recognized. I might go ahead and do, um, recognitions just because I have a lot of people there for something that's really positive. And, um, to build up that community and put that face of, hey, we've got all of these great things that are going on in our district. Because we want, I mean, as trustees, part of our job is to advocate, um, for, for our district. And so being, being, um, you know, aware of those things, um.
Problem is, is not rough their definition on that, you know?
It's not.
If you have fourteen items, then it's, it, it could be interpreted as if, if it was item number six, that's in the beginning.
It's in the beginning.
You, you mean, it.
It's very great.
For interpretation, yeah. It's the unfortunate part. I do, I agree. Yeah, we do.
It, it's before all of the chunk of the business of the school district.
But I'm with you, I mean, I would much rather do recognitions before that, you know? Because of, it'd be exactly as you just said.
And I'm, you know, not trying to hide anything, but also, like, my work was little. And if I had, I don't know, thirty kids with mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, brothers, sisters, pets. I wanted, I just wanted to share all of space. Um, and, and we just, we couldn't feasibly, like, we, we would have standing room only for recognition a lot of times. Especially when we were doing state recognitions, um, I mean, it's just really, it's just a special time for those kids.
I think before business, I wouldn't use a big topic.
And it, it's a, unless they give us. Unless they come out and they give us different guidance, which they may, um, but I, I think your role would be your, your right of putting in, you know, half your recognitions. Um, also, the board must prohibit DEI and CRT. Um, you must come out at the board and publicly say that you are prohibiting DEI and CRT. It requires board certification of this. And it prohibits any gender transitioning support that might go on.
So would we do that for resolution, or, I mean?
I would say yes. Have you all done that yet? Don't think so, okay. So just coming out and saying that we prohibit that, and I.
I expect that we'll have some updates as a part of our next legislative update. While we have the, the whole policy update, then at that point, there would be something that would be updated when the law would make what it was.
Um, I've heard that there's a possibility, like, when you're applying for grants and some funding from the state, you're going to have to attach that resolution.
Imagine that.
I don't know, but, I mean, that's kind of hearsay, like chatter. Um, so handbook and required training on parent rights. The state is, TA is creating a parent rights handbook, which will be out in January. Uh, so just a month away, we should have a parents' rights handbook. And this is the training that I said you are going to get to do in April. So there will be a parents' rights training for trustees beginning April.
That's good, you come out?
The handbook, January first.
Oh, we're training about three months later.
And then you all get training about it in April.
Sounds, I'm, I'm pro, I think.
Um, I think that the, uh, I, I hope that the training is on TDA Learn, but I don't know that for sure. Um, I. Um, let's see, this one, I'm not really gonna touch this one, I'm gonna refer you to your legal, uh, because I've heard everything around this. This is about the posting of minutes. And I will tell you that if you read the second bullet here, it says within seven days of board approval. So that is saying approved minutes are posted within seven days. This has been all over the place. Do whatever your legal counsel says to do on how you post minutes. If you choose to post them before they're approved, approved, you can put the word draft across them. Um, we talked about election day.
Let me back up, I thought I saw a date that said twenty twenty-five in there. Yeah, this date to make the change is different than the date on the previous one.
So this, okay. Good catch. The other one is if you want to change term limits. This one is if you want to change the date of election.
So the things you said, but just two separate bills about it.
Okay, thank you.
School finance, household too, it's a big, um, finance bill. And, um, kind of the things that I will lift from this. Uh, are you all doing teacher incentive allotment? Yes.
National.
If teachers are national full certified, you'll go to TIA. Okay. Or if they come to you from another district. Um, the legislature put a lot of money into TIA to continue this program. I don't think it's going away. Um, they put a second layer essentially in there of new designation.
Yes.
Um, one of which helps administrators start to get incentive allotment money. Um, so looking at that, uh, in the future and having conversations around that, um, they added, we have a staff of three at the region center. We are going to have a staff of six that they are funding people to support teacher incentive allotments, um, for teachers. And so I, I just don't think it's going away, and I expect it to become something that everybody's going to have to, like, working at more. Um, they did increase the basic allotment by fifty-five dollars, the small and midsize, um, increased by roughly ten percent. They put some money into safety and security, roughly thirty-three thousand dollars per campus and twenty dollars per student. Uh, they came in and they said they were going to pay for the cost of some exams. So they're paying for the bilingual exam. And I believe the special education exam for people that want to go get those certifications. Um, and then they did put in that beginning next year, pay through five teachers in reading and math must be certified. And the following year, K twelve, um, reading, math, science, culture.
Quick question, when you said they're gonna pay for those, those exams, is that like a reimbursement, or is that no charge when you take it?
So I am not a hundred percent certain, but I have seen people post on social media that they registered for it at no cost.
Okay. That's what I heard in my training. At the center, but when you go to a quick audit.
In no cost.
And if you failed, it could be a fail.
That was the wondering I had, if you failed it, what happened?
He said, well, yes.
Oh, probably. Um, on, another piece that is in there is, they changed the bilingual exam, and they've, um, taken a piece of it out. There were some pieces of it that were really, really difficult, um, that are not actually even equivalent to other certification specimens, and so they removed that. That's your conclusion.
I do actually think though, back to, not being funny, but it, you have to log into your account when you do those trials, it's like a one-time thing. So if you don't, the next time you log in to take the center pay, you pay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think it's kind of like.
Oh, one, one shot, free shot.
Okay. I don't know if it's changing that.
I was more concerned by being a reimbursement lower.
No, my understanding is the first time you log in for sure, it's, it's no charge here.
Uh, and then kindergarten, uh, not kindergarten, pre-K, so your employees can bring their kiddos for free, free pre-K in the district. Um, already talked about school safety, so just a cup, uh-oh, there it is. Um, this one is an interesting one, I didn't have this in my slide deck originally, and I had some people start asking about it, so I put it in here. Um, students want to go to attend religious courses during release time, can do that for up to five hours per week, and the district must excuse those absent. And, um.
What is an exemption about?
So, like, I don't really know, but, um.
A prayer time?
Well.
There's a.
Religious courses. So it would be like if their church had a cloud, like.
Confirmation.
That's what I would think.
Something like that, like during the day, instead of going in the evening, they could go.
Is there a, what's on the documentation for charging for that to be excused?
It's upon request of the parents or guardian.
That's what I wondered what the policy says, if it, if it says, because there's so much like attendance issues, you know? You'd be like, I could see that being.
Oh, that's important.
Well, they, they can miss five hours of reading. So, it, does that mean that that, say that again?
So if you're counting paternity, you don't count unexcused absences. So this would exempt them from paternity court, but it would still count towards ninety percent attendance. Excused and unexcused absences count towards ninety percent attendance for credits being awarded, so.
But this is, this is a built-in release time course, so you would build this into their schedule. They would have a period to go do that.
Hmm, oh, that, that helps.
So they would be missing their algebra class.
They weren't just.
That, not.
Or just call in, or did not come in, or whatever, so then afterwards, like, geez, I think.
Kind of have it planned in with me.
Yeah. Yes.
Five hour per day, that's where the five hours are a week.
Or it's one.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be every day, but that's where they're.
But that's where the five hours.
It'd be like a course that they are going to, and it would be built into their schedule.
But, but it's our responsibility to accommodate their schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
For that, which, which does add to the legitimacy of sad religious relief or whatever it was.
Um, and then just two things from the special sessions. The first one, STAR, this is really just because I want you to be aware of this. Um, so the STAR test, the new STAR test is set to start in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so not next year, the year after that. Um, it will be a three short. Um, it will be a three short assessment test, so a beginning, middle and end of year assessment. Accountability comes off of end of year. For, it got rid of English two, so high school now has English one, algebra, biology and U S history. Um, high school end of course does not have to do beginning and middle of a year. They do have to do end of year, so the beginning and middle becomes optional for those end of course. Um. Why is it not happening for two years? Because it takes two years. Two reasons, it takes two years to create an assessment, because it has to go through the vetting process. That's number one. The commissioner of education by law now has to have the accountability manual released. So he's got to get an accountability manual released for this new assessment. Before we get to that year, because of the law things that happens, he's got to get that done prior to. So that's why we're looking at twenty seven, twenty eight.
You mean they're having to be held accountable, we're putting things out in the.
First question comes to mind, it's like, what's their vetting process? Like, what even is that?
So. They bring in teachers and they have teachers, it's, it's groups of teachers that evaluate the questions.
Can you hear me? Correct me if I'm wrong, but the best part about this is the results have to be within forty eight hours, so T E A can't build that bill card that they've always built. So that's better. That's what it's going to take for two years is to figure out a grade of exposure within forty eight hours. And remember, they're working on that GPA algorithm too. So they, they control where the goalpost are.
So lots of, lots of hurry and wait on this really. Um, but just know that what's coming is a three, like a three time a year assessment, beginning, middle and end of year.
Just to be clear, the last one is the only one that counts towards the.
Yes.
And this is why our community based accountability system is so important, is that we, you know, it's not a moving target. We aren't ignoring the STAR tests and that accountability, but we still have the foundation of what's important to the godly communities. And, and we just add the STAR to it, add the STAR changes, we don't have to change everything that we believe in. We just now just have to change a little bit of what, you know. Not a few pieces of the puzzle, not the big.
And then the bottom half to one is going to be late, um, and this is the test of women's private theatres. Uh, this one basically says, schools must assign multi-use restrooms and locker rooms based on biological sex problems. Period. And if you don't, the first time of no compliance is twenty five thousand. And every time after that is a hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, and this is, this is not just school, this is colleges and universities. This is everybody, private schools, you must assign staffing. So that is it. Um, if you don't mind, real quick, give the big QR code with a survey. And after that, I'm done. I was giving you a little bit of the first slide, that might go a bit off, so, don't, don't forget.
Hey, those first few slides that you, you, you had in the very first couple.
Yes. I have to get them to you.
Okay.
Are you talking about the ones with the, the board frame or? Yeah, it's everything, yeah.
I accessed earlier that has a.
There.
You're right. Yeah, that's why, that's why I asked, yeah.
She sent the presentation of a terrible document.
It was like the first couple of slides, actually, okay, all right. So. You win.
So we can team a lot, or we? Let's play about Dave. I said it up there against a hip thump.
Yeah. Little pile of rain, do some down before we get into the next place.
Thank you, Ken, you're very welcome. So, thank you. Very thank. Hi. Hello, now. Hi, can I invite you to other trainees? Thank you.
I'm surprised how long it took to get here. And I normally, like, yeah, normally, if I'm a scoop, I can make it for like twenty five minutes. I mean, but, but I do get in trouble, yeah, I mean, even though I get some stuff in there, five, three, six. Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, I, yeah, 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 we, we, we're on a first name basis. It's just like legitimately. We're cool enough.
In fact, he was just like, now just hand it up when you look around.
Yeah, how it is.
I don't know, I'm just really, I started a, a work. Yeah, so I can, I can't, it's really difficult.
Okay. I think, yeah. It may be that you find it on me, but not me.
Oh, so crazy, but lots of.
Or.
Did you? Yes, actually. Yeah, super nice, um, forty five percent of the, yeah, it's great.
We hardly believe. That's it.
Yeah.
My hands, like, that's right.
Where did you go?
Oh, it's the first thing I've ever, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, I've never been played. The one time I made them, you know, when I. I'm not sure why I can't start. I'm pretty. Daniel.
Start up, sitting there, but we'll see if it's right. Another thing about those is you turn around, legs, we get ready, we get the leg, we start, yeah. 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 I feel like we, operating about to turn around because of my back, so I didn't decide to start.
Thank you. Um, I think it checks out.
All right. All right. All here, so let's get started.
I don't have to, I don't have to, I'm just great. Sometimes it's anything, there's a contact, there's a, there's.
It's, it's right.
We are now going to move into the, item five B. So, Carl, so you. I'll get started, all right, so, howdy, good evening, everybody. And so Dr. Dottle, Dr. Block, Dr. Nix are also here and they're going to come up and present their portions of this as well. And so we wanted to give you some update, uh, do some information on, uh, just our district improvement plan. Um, so, um, which starts the academic piece, so then it's the attendance, trinity, and then last but not least is climate, uh, survey, or climate survey. And so we made the decision to really start digging, um, digging more than we ever have, um, into academic survey, attention, trinity. Uh, but we're doing it bi-weekly, um, with, uh, with our cabinet and then, but also quarterly, what we're going data dive. Data dig to really getting into, uh, what's going on, uh, with our, at our camps. And so with that, here's what we expect, we expect to see some, uh, some market improvements in these things. And a three point increase in the district T E A rating, a thirty five percent participation rate, which still is only a third, but it is significantly more than what we've had. And so, and we've got some good things going on there, and then a half percent increase in. Before we move on, thirty five percent of participation rate of what spectrum?
Of the, of the, of the district.
Staff, of the administration staff of what?
Yes, sir.
District staff, everybody. Including, uh, maintenance team, uh, all of, everybody, okay, yes, correct. Yes, sir, good question. Hold on, I might have flipped it back off, trying to save the battery. Turned it off, I didn't flip it off, I turned it off, okay. Um, and so here is just kind of a timeline of some of the things that we're, that we're doing. And you'll see, um, we have our SAT chats. And those, and everything is colored, so that we're, we're doing them, but we're also doing them at a frequency, right? We're, it's not a one off, we're not just doing this one time, not in the background, but we're, we're staying with it, there's some consistency there. Um, and so we're going to talk more about this, uh, throughout this entire presentation. Uh, but you kind of wanted to give you, um, a picture of what this is, so, um, we're digging into data here. Campuses, we're having these campus data dives, SAT chats, which include walkthrough data, uh, assessments, early warning signs, trying to find students uh, that, uh, that we're already seeing some, some warning signs of trouble academic or what we tend to visit.
Can I ask you to really enunciate this for anybody who's watching online, that you are saying STAR chat?
STAR, yes.
And not.
Back, what do you mean?
Clear for any of our online audience? That, statistics.
Yes. So having the STAR around our, uh, chat around our statistics, right? Yes, and so anyway, so we have these planned out, as you can see, going all the way back, that's a September, and I'm going through the end of the year. So we will come back to this throughout. Hey, before, before we move on, I'm sorry, I'm going to be loaded with questions because you're diving into data. Yes, sir. Okay, so, first of all, this is a fantastic, I would correlate this to a business rhythm, uh, associated with your, your data dives. So fantastic, I love it, this is really, really awesome. Um, so why is it the third quarter before you start doing what appears to be benchmarking? What, what am I missing that it seems to me you would have to have? Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's in Q three of the year. Why are you not having something early to compare to if you're not benchmarking until the third quarter? Have you not missed half the year?
No, we do, so let me step in, so, um, this common curriculum comment assessment that we have earlier in the year, a benchmark test is looking at the entire, like a mini STAR test. And we want to plot all of the material until we've reached about this point in the year. So we do common assessments throughout testing on the material we plot, but if we give this benchmark, this mini STAR test early in the year, students haven't seen much of the curriculum that's cut on the test, and so it doesn't tell us what they know, it tells us what they don't. And so if we do a stop and do a benchmark here, let's see where we are, how much growth we've made, and then do that final push and start.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot more sense, so I appreciate that. Sir, sorry, it's, it's a quick question, going back to the survey. I thought I asked you before, when you, after you flipped the slides. When, when Greg had was clarifying all staff, is the results, are the results categorized by physician, department, etc.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and with that, Dr. Block is going to go into great detail around all of that under goal three.
Sir.
Answer any more of that, there's one. Okay, and so. I'll back up one more.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Your very last entry. What is that, forty five, eight, seventeen supposed to be?
I suppose it would probably be, uh, early June.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the date happened there, but that's early June, when we get started a bag and we look at our, um, extended protective responses in our shoulders.
Month, six, seven, six, seven. Thank you. All right, and we certainly, everything's based around our pillars, and so we're going to touch on our pillars, it's, it's a timeline.
So as we actually had a great segue into talking about community based accountability, and you've heard us talking about community based accountability and the seven pillars for the last several years, and it's been a pretty significant part of who we are in our district, based on, uh, what's important to the people that live here, that work here, the students that go to school here. What's been missing has been that state accountability piece, and I wanted to just take a moment to go back and look at kind of what the progression has been and why state accountability has not been part of the conversation for the last several years. Um, prior to COVID in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, we were digging into STAR data, we were looking at our accountability ratings. We were, um, we were really focused in on how we were making progress and what growth we were, we were making on the STAR test. During the nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, very difficult to say all the twenties, um, there was no STAR test given. Because of COVID, because of the shutdown, and so there were no accountability ratings issued during those school years. There was a change to the STAR test and a change to the accountability system that happened between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. In twenty twenty two, there was a new STAR test given, and there were accountability ratings given, but they were based on the old system and transitioning to the new system. So we kind of had two different ratings, um, but it was really still based on the old accountability rating system. The new system was supposed to go into place for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. However, as, um, Carrie, Carrie mentioned, there was a lawsuit that stated that the, the state did not do their due diligence in completing the accountability rating before the school year started. We went into the year, we actually took STAR and there wasn't a finalized accountability system yet. So the twenty twenty three ratings were held, they were not sent out, um, they were not sent out in twenty three, they were not sent out in twenty four. The next year, twenty three and twenty four, we took our STAR test anticipating we would get an accountability rating that year. Prior to ratings coming out, a second lawsuit was filed stating that the test not been validated. The, uh, T E A wrote the test, but they did not have a second party validated questions, and so there was a lawsuit and the ratings were held. So for several years, there was no ratings sent out. We got STAR scores, we looked at individual student data, we looked at how our campuses were doing, but there was no public proclamation of how public schools were doing. Um, there was nothing in the news about A's or B's or C's, and all just stopped for several years. Twenty twenty five, in April of twenty twenty five, the twenty twenty three ratings were released for campus alone. They did not give us a rating for the district that year, they only released campus ratings, and that was this, this year, in the last full year. So we received our twenty twenty three rating in April, and then in August, they released the twenty twenty four ratings. And we did receive a rating for the campuses and the district, we received a seventy six, which was a C for twenty twenty four. And then about two weeks later, they released the twenty twenty five ratings. which, again, we had a seventy-seven, we had progress, we made growth, and we were a C. So, we had three years' worth of accountability ratings that all came out in about three or four months this year. And so, there was a lot of awareness, a lot of discussion about where we are in the district. Are we making progress? Are we making growth? And we have been making progress every year. We've seen progress and growth. But this will be the first year, we will go into the school year, take the STAR test under an accountability rating system that we know and understand, and with full anticipation, that we will receive our ratings at the end of this school year. So, I say all that to say, oh, but don't forget, in another year and a half, the test is changing again, the accountability system will change again, and we'll start all over. Everything will change again in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. But this year, this year, we are focused very strongly on understanding how the Texas Education Agency Accountability System scores campuses and how ratings are assigned. We made a decision to focus strongly on understanding this because you can't win the game if you don't understand the rules. If you don't know how the game is played, you cannot win. And so, I don't want this to sound like we haven't been paying attention to it, we absolutely have. But we finally have a clear understanding of what the state is looking for and what we need to do to accomplish what we want to see happen. So, we're digging in this year, we're looking at the accountability system. We are looking at the test very closely, we're looking more deeply at the standards so that we can make informed instructional decisions. And from that, we fully expect to see at least a three-point gain on our accountability rating and the district's A B overall. The big question that has come up several times over the last few months, so what does it take to get a B? So, what do we have to do? What does that look like? So, I am going to make every effort to take two hundred and forty-one pages of formulas and explanations and accountability and explain it to you in about an hour. It's going to be a little bit of a ride, but we're going to do it. I did give you two handouts. We debated strongly about even you think to look at or not. I strongly urge you, just give me all your attention up here if you can because it's going to be a little bit convoluted and a lot of information. But everything I talked about is on these two pages, so you can go back and kind of read over it again and check back. But we're going to, we're going to work through it and see if we can help you understand how a A through F accountability system works in tech. So, first things first.
I'm probably jumping ahead, but not just going to help us understand how it works, but what we're doing about it, right?
Yes, how it works and what we're doing.
Thank you so much.
But first, we're going to talk about how it works. So, the first thing I want to point out is that there are three domains that are calculated for the state accountability. Elementary and middle schools are calculated on one system, and high schools are calculated on slightly different systems. So, as we go through, I'm going to explain to you the difference between how an elementary and middle school is calculated versus how the high school is calculated. At the elementary and middle school, the rating is based almost one hundred percent on STAR scores. There's only one portion, this small ten percent portion right here is based on Pell Cox, but everything else is based on the STAR data. So, when we look at an elementary school or a middle school, we look at straight star performance or academic growth on STAR or relative performance on STAR, and I'm going to explain what each of these means. And whichever of these is the biggest, is the best, that makes up seventy percent of your score. And then the remaining thirty percent will come from these categories. We're going to dig into each one of them. So, at the elementary and middle school, STAR data is one hundred and ninety percent of what counts. When we look at the high school, we have STAR performance, we have C C M R, graduation rate, and a few other factors that are going to factor in. So, let's dig into domain one. Again, elementary and middle school, one hundred percent STAR. High school, STAR counts for about forty percent of domain one. College career and military readiness, which I'm going to refer to as C C M R for the rest of this time, just for ease, makes up forty percent of domain one. And graduation rate makes up twenty percent of domain one for the high school. So, how do they calculate STAR performance? For those of you who are math people, you're about to cringe, because we do something that is absolutely forbidden in math. We are going to average averages. That is how they determine. I know, I see your head. I've been drowning this moment all week. So. So, this is how this works. The state says, okay, how many total tests would they get on this campus? This is an elementary campus, so we're reading language arts, we have two hundred and forty-six students that took a reading test. We had two hundred and forty-six students who took a math test. That's all third, fourth, and fifth, all third, fourth, and fifth. And eighty-seven students who took a science test, which only fifth graders take science in elementary school. So, we had a total of five hundred and seventy-nine tests given for the 2025 STAR assessment of last grade. Of those students, four hundred and fifty-seven of them achieved approaches or above. Approaches means they passed the test. That doesn't necessarily mean they are well-prepared for the next grade level, but they passed the test. They are ready to move on to the next grade level, they might need a little bit of support, but they pass. So, four hundred and fifty-seven students, or seventy-nine percent, were at approaches or above. Meets level means that they were prepared for the next grade level. They're at about that mid-range level, between around a seventy, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five. And so, of these four hundred and fifty-seven students, two hundred and eighty of them also scored at the meets level. So, you can see, these numbers do not add up to five hundred and seventy-nine. It's not a straight percentage. So, we had four hundred and fifty-seven, seventy-nine percent were approaches. Another forty-eight percent were at meets level. And then another twenty-three percent, or one hundred and thirty-four of the two hundred and eighty, go out, achieved masters. Masters level means they're well-prepared for the next grade level, they're at the top eighty-five to ninety percent success on the STAR test. So, we take our average percentages here, of how many students were in each category, we add that up, we get a hundred and fifty percent. We take that and divide by three, because there were three categories. So, that gives us a composite score. And you're going to hear these words, composite score and scale score, throughout this presentation. So, a composite score of fifty for an elementary school would rank as a C for domain one. An elementary school needs a fifty-three to be at a B level for domain one. So, what we're doing is looking at the data and saying, okay, so we know our elementary schools need to have a hundred and sixty percent here to achieve a B on domain one. So, we're setting our goals for our common assessments and our benchmarks. And each time we take an assessment, we want to see about eighty to eighty-five percent of our students at approaches, fifty to fifty-five percent at meets, and twenty to twenty-five percent at masters. If we can get those numbers up to three to five percent, we will easily achieve one sixty. When we divide by three, we'll be there at our fifty-three. So, the first domain for elementary and middle school is straight STAR data. The number of kids that took the test, how many achieve each level, add it up, divide by three, and you get a composite.
And that's strictly for campus, like a campus rating?
A campus rating.
Not a district?
Right.
It's a different formula for a district.
Slightly, but I'm going to show you how, but it's pleasant, so, yeah, yeah. So, am I understanding that two hundred and eighty meets or above is also included in four fifty-seven approaches?
Yeah.
As well as one hundred and thirty-four in masters was included in the meets and, yes. So, these kids counted three times.
So, I always thought that it was a conversion, like the AF conversion was the higher of the three. The two, you take the two different categories, and it's the higher, the meet, the, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, but no.
It's been a long journey.
Do they all count?
Yeah. In essence, this student counted three times because they were counted three times. So, technically, you could get three times as many points for a student to get masters because they count three times in the category. So, that's kind of how that works. So, wait, there's more.
Probably too much in the weeds here. But so, could we identify kids that are like, at the cusp, the different levels? And those are easy, easy.
Yeah, easy to the upper.
Yeah.
We'll tell you right now, if one student in every classroom had answered one question correctly, one additional question correctly, had to be the right student, the right question. But we would have been easily, if one student in every class had answered one more question, we were that close. And I have a full list of how many kids missed each level by one or two classes.
Okay.
So, once we get a component score, the magic happens. The state takes our percentage, takes our component score, calculates that number, and turns it into a scale. So, a fifty becomes a seventy-seven, so we don't know how. I cannot tell you how this happens, but there is a formula somewhere buried in this two hundred and forty-one. But, yes, so a fifty becomes a seventy-seven, and that seventy-seven becomes a C for domain one for this elementary school. Okay? So, at the high school, things get a little more complicated. We look at STAR performance the exact same way in high school. But you have to remember, in high school, we only have English one,语文 two, algebra one, and biology. Quite a few less testing opportunities, less students testing, but the calculation works exactly the same. So, we come up with a components score for STAR performance. We also consider C C M R, and this is how C C M R is calculated. They look at the total number of graduates for this class. And each student that earns a C C M R point, which can be earned by taking CSI, dual credit, AP exams, there's several ways that students can earn dual credit points, but the rules keep changing. Every time we figure out a way to give kids credit for the points, they take that option away, and they make the rules a little bit different. So, this has changed almost every year, correct, Steve? Almost every year, the way you earn these points has changed or been adapted every year. So, last year, two hundred and eleven seniors, graduates, graduates. Of those, one hundred and eighty-one of them earned a C C M R point, which earned them eighty-six points. So, to have a B, you needed at least seventy-eight. An eighty-eight to have an A, we were in eighty-six. So, we were very close to an A on this portion, but we earned a B. That forty percent, STAR performance is another forty percent, and the graduation rate is the final twenty percent for high school domain one. At this point, they let us choose the best of our three-year graduation groups. So, we have a four-year graduation group, a five-year graduation group, and a six-year graduation group. So, we can look back and say, which year was our best? And in this case, in 2025, our class of 2022 six-year graduates had a ninety-eight point two percent graduation rate. That was the best, but we use that one as our twenty percent.
You guys, the six-year.
Yeah.
So, if we have, we have a big group of kids that are graduating, there's a couple that don't graduate. They give us credit for not giving up on those guys that didn't graduate. And if they graduated in five years, then we go over the tick, if we graduate.
But they come back and they start after they keep working.
Get them graduated, they give us credit for not giving up on the kids basically.
So, good.
Those are still our kids, where the kids who aren't graduated.
Yes. They're instead of a four-year degree, they're a six-year. And these other kids will come back and they'll continue to maybe finalize those fees or take the STAR test. Whatever they need to do to get that graduation. So, this year, we chose the six-year graduation group, ninety-eight point two, and that is an A for graduation rate for domain one at high school. We get to pick that. Yes, well, the state kind of fixed it, they just choose the highest of the three, and they, I mean, no one would pick the lowest. So, they just automatically pull the highest place they had. So, how this works for the high school, again, they take your components score, they plug it into a system. A forty-six turns into a seventy-four. An eighty-six for C C M R turns into an eighty-eight. And your ninety-eight point two, and I cannot explain this to you, turned into a ninety-eight point seven, which became a nine. Filling it. I cannot tell you why, but everywhere I look, the state has it calculated at ninety-eight point seven. So, we're going to take that extra half a point they gave us. So, for the high school, their calculations added up to an eighty-three, which was a B for domain one. So, for domain one, we're pretty much looking at STAR data and then a high school C C M R and graduation rate. That's option one. Next, we're going to look at domain two A. Domain two broken into two sections. Are there any questions about domain one, or do you want to just keep on moving and come back if we have one?
Thank you.
Okay.
Explain the ors.
Okay. So, I explain them when I get closer to the end, because when you see it, it will make more sense when you see how the state uses it.
Okay.
So, yes. Um, so, okay, yes, I will come back to that.
Yeah.
So, the next option is academic growth. Academic growth is calculated similarly at elementary, middle, and high school. So, there are two portions. Domain two A is broken up into two sections, annual growth and accelerated growth. Take any breath with me, this is going to be a little bit crazy. So, what happens is the state is looking at students that take the same test one year and the next. So, third-grade reading, fourth-grade reading, sixth-grade math, seventh-grade math. Science is not calculated in here because they only take science at fifth, eighth, and biology. There's not two years to compare against. So, what it's looking at is how did a student perform in 2024 compared to how a student performed in 2025? If the student maintains, they drew the exact same, they did not meet high in 2024, they stay at that same level in 2025, they earn half a point of growth. Because we have to remember, it's a year's worth of growth because they went from a third-grade reading test to a fourth-grade reading test. So, if they can stay at that same level, that is considered growth because it's a year more difficult content that they're learning. If they can make progress and move from not passing the test or did not meet high to passing the test at approaches, that is significant growth, that's expected growth. That is a one-point growth. So, maintaining at, did not meet high or approaches, or meet, or approaches, either one, is a half a point. If they can maintain, they get a half a point. The goal is to move them forward. We want to get kids moving up every year. Once they get to meets, if they stay at meets or masters, they get a full point. That's great, that's what we set them to be. So, the biggest thing we want to make sure we're seeing is that everyone's moving forward and no one's moving backwards. Because if a student moves backwards, we get no growth point for them. So, let's look at some of our data. And this is a little bit hard to read, but I want to explain it to you as best I can. So, on the 2023, 2024 state test, we had thirty students on this campus that did not meet, but at the high end. They were close, they were almost there, but they did not quite pass the test. Of those students, eight went backwards. They had did not meet, oh, actually, they, yeah, they went backwards. They moved back to did not meet low, only eight. Ten of the students stayed right where they were. They were did not meet high, they stayed at did not meet high. So, we earned half a point for these ten kids, five points. Five students moved up from did not meet high to approaches low. So, we earned a whole point for each of those five students. Six of them moved up to approaches high, so they were almost there to meets, so we earned a point. One of these students went from did not passing, did not meets, all the way up to meets, so we earned a point for that student. I think we should earn two points if they get that much growth, but they didn't ask me.
They chose not to show up.
Good chance, Angie, really bad day.
That's for me.
So, for this calculation, the state looks at all the possible calculations that were there, all the possible points that we could have gained and what we did gain, and they count up how many points we earned. So, we earned a hundred and ninety-eight point. So we earned a hundred and ninety-eight point five points out of a possible three hundred and ten. So we had three hundred and ten points that we could have earned, we earned a hundred and ninety-eight. We divide those numbers and we come up with a growth score of sixty-four. So that is how this portion of this domain is calculated, the first half. So moving kids forward, no one goes backwards, that's our mantra here. The other portion of this is looking specifically at students who did not pass one year and passed the next. So we look at those thirty students that were at did not meet high, and then we have some that were at did not meet low. And so the state calculates, how many students did we move from not passing to passing? And that's considered an accelerated growth. We got them over the line, they passed the test. Those students get an additional point two five point. So we calculate how many students we, we got over the line, we multiplied that by point two five. We add that to the annual growth points, the one ninety-five, one ninety-eight point five. We add everything up, we add all the pieces together, and so for our accelerated growth point, we earned eighteen. We add that to our one ninety-eight point five, so we had eighteen.
Okay, go back.
Sorry. So we got eighteen out of sixty-seven possible.
Eight, right.
Eighteen out of sixty-seven possible students moved from did not meets to meet, and this is on reading and math only. And so we take those eighteen students, multiply it by point two five, and we end up with four point five accelerated learning points. Add all that together, then divide by our possible points, and we end up with a component score of sixty-five for domain two A at elementary. Any questions about this one? I know there's a lot, but.
It's almost as if you get more credit for accelerated growth, like for, for drastic improvement.
Yeah, if you don't do well one year and then.
Well, what if, what if the kids, like, meaning in theory, I know this isn't possible, but in theory, you have a, you have a school where, let's say ninety percent of the whole grade are straight A's. You have a, you, and then you have the other campus that seventy percent fell last year, now they're going to, they're all passing this year. While they're passing with Cs, they're going to have a higher rating.
That they could earn more points here, yes.
Lock doesn't work that way, it makes it work that way.
Yes. You could earn more points for getting kids for not having to pass even getting to the top.
Crazy. That's crazy.
So, okay, so domain two A, academic growth side, this camp, this campus has a academic growth score of sixty-five. Then the next side of this is relative performance. This one's really going to blow your mind. So this part is based on the percent of students on the campus that qualify for free or reduced lunch. So the state has a formula set up. It says, if your campus has between thirty and thirty-one percent free or reduced lunch, they look at how your star performance score was. If you remember all the way back to domain one, campus earned a fifty for their star scores. They take that star performance number and they plot it on the grid based on where your low SES numbers are, and they give it a score. In this case, this campus, their fifty, based on their low SES numbers, gave them a scaled score of a sixty. And that sixty is then converted over here onto this, um, this calculation, and then it is reevaluated some way, somehow, based on low SES numbers, and then that is converted into the domain two score.
So it's almost like you're getting, you're somewhat, it's like a handicap system in a sense.
Yeah.
Cool. Oh, no, they're not, they're not transposing lines.
Performance can be the four and A. So if you have a high-low SES number, your star score can be lower to achieve an A, it's a sliding scale. So if you have a low SES, you need a higher star score. So, okay, so for this campus, we have domain two A growth was a sixty-five, which then converted to a scaled score of a seventy-three. We have domain two B, which was relative performance based on low SES and star, because this campus only had thirty percent free or reduced lunch. So that fifty became a sixty. So overall, this campus for domain two earned a seventy-eight, which was a C. Okay, this is an elementary school. High school looks very similar. Oh, no, I went back, I went to high school, sorry. High school, this was, oh, sorry, this elementary school was a seventy-three. High school looks very similar, except they also look at the star performance, the CCMR data and the graduation rate. And they're all done the exact same way. They're, they're put on a sliding scale based on low SES numbers. They're given a ranking based on where we performed. So as you can see, our, um, this is our star component. We write, uh, we have a forty-six, and that was converted to a seventy, I believe. Yeah, the forty-six was converted to a seventy based on star performance. And then our eighty-six on our CCMR was plotted, and it actually stayed at an eighty-six. So those numbers are averaged together, and we earned a seventy-eight for the high school. And so again, that's calculated here, the sixty-six becomes a sixty-seven, but this is just domain two, this is just domain two. Yeah, two A and two B, two A and two B. So, and then we have our forty-six becomes a seventy for eighty-six. So the high school earned a C on domain two, which is an overall C for the high school. Okay? Now, remember at the high school, they had a B on domain one, they have a C on domain two, so keep that in mind. So, we've looked at domain one, we've looked at domain two and two B, now we're going to look at domain three. This is probably my favorite part, but it's still a little bit. So on domain three, it's calculated similarly at both camp, both types of campuses, but they look at different components. So for domain three, we're looking at closing the gap. There are several things that are considered, but again, all of them tie back to star scores and step one. So all of them look at star data. This is domain three in a nutshell. It's very difficult to read, but you have all of this on your paper. I'm going to break it up into little digestible chunks. So the first thing we want to look at is each campus type has four components. They're not the same four components, elementary has four, elementary and middle school have four, high school have four, they're not the same. We also look at four student groups that are specific to the campus. Every campus will look at all students, and then they will look at two subpopulation groups, and then they will look at what's called a high focus group. We will look at the target scores that the state has set for the entire state of Texas, and look at how we've performed based on each component and each subpop against the target. And then all of those scores are going to be totaled up and to look at our harsh points divided by the possible points for that component. Let me show. So, at elementary and middle school, we look at academic achievement, growth, which is the same growth that we looked at before, our E, our ELC status, which is how students perform on the TELCOC test, and then student success status, which is again, star performance, just like we calculated it in domain one. So two of these numbers we've already seen, and two of them we're going to look at through, um, a different lens, a slightly different lens. At high school, again, academic achievement, graduation status, ELC status and school quality status, which is very similar to domain one again. Um, the student groups that we look at, as I said, it can vary from campus to campus, because we're going to always look at all students and then the two lowest performing subpopulations from the previous year's test. So for most of our campuses, Hispanic and white are our predominant subpopulation. That's what we have the most of in our campuses. You have to have at least ten tests for a group to count as a subpopulation. So we only have one campus where African-American has enough students testing that they count as a group for accountability sake. Their scores always count in all students, they count in every other group, but on most of our campuses, Hispanic and white are the two groups that we're focused on, because that's the majority of what our population is made up of.
Before you move on?
Yeah.
That would factor into campus scores, using African-American and the white or the Hispanic, whatever category is calculated for that campus. How does that converge into districts?
They don't do that anymore.
Okay.
Um, the district accountability is completely changed on how the weight of the campuses are.
It used to matter.
Yeah.
But they don't calculate it that way on this new account.
Okay. Um, so we look at all students.
Come from.
This data comes from the previous year's star data, they look at.
Where, where does a student declare whether they're African-American or Hispanic or what?
When they enroll in school and they fill out their admin's capable desires. Yeah. So. Question? Yeah, okay. Um, so we're going to look at all students, we're going to look at two subpopulations, and then this is a change of date name, actually in our favor. This was a good thing. We now have what's called a high focus group. So if a student qualifies for low socioeconomic, they fall into this group. If they qualify for special education, they're counted in this group. If they are all of these things, they only count one time in this group. They used to count.
It's a.
Yes, they used to count as, as, as the ESL, as the low SES, as, they used to count multiple times. Now, they still count in all students, and they count in Hispanic or white, and they count in high focus. So, these students still count three times, but at least they don't count six times.
Yeah.
Which it used to be counted multiple times. So, any student that has a special category falls into high focus, and that's a separate group kind of to itself.
High low S student.
Yeah.
So, if a student's parent, I'm going to say chooses to hold them out of school on the day of star testing, how does that impact our score?
It's a failure.
So it's a zero.
Five minutes. But it gives them not to. If they just don't come, because we have to give them multiple, multiple, they would have to not come. And then it would count as a non-participation. So it wouldn't count.
Can they put up a comp out?
Well, the way that they are opting out now, they have to open the test if they're there, but they have the option of submitting the test without taking. Yeah, so they open the test and take it, and then by chance they had taken it the year before and met or mastered, and now they're, so they're going to impact that for it, and they have, and so let it go. But, but, but you're trying to say, yeah, it.
Backwards, but that's weird, it's all backwards, and it's very penalizing.
Yeah.
Again, on.
They didn't pass the test, but were to be penalized, because if they took it the year before and did pass the test, now we're, we're double winning.
Yeah.
And when, if you follow all this logging, if they don't want to take it, they ought to get an automatic one hundred. And that's, that's where life is at.
So, okay, so we have components, we have our subgroups, so now let's look at the points that we can earn. And this, by stuff, we made a, a great point yesterday on interview. So this is how the points are credited. The state sets a target, they say, okay, this is the target you need to meet for this year. Then they set a next level target, which is the target for twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty. And then they have a long-range target, which is twenty thirty-seven and beyond. Okay? So if we do not meet our target, if we go backwards, we miss the target, we're way off, we get zero points. If we make some progress, we move up one percentage point from the year before, we can earn one point. Even if we didn't hit our target, but we made progress, we can get one point. If we get close to the target and the current year's rate minus our prior year's rate is greater than or equal to the next target minus our prior year's rate divided by three, then we can get two points. So if we get close, but not quite there, we can get two points. If we meet the target, we can get three out of four points. The only way to get four out of four points is to hit the target for twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight. Children that are not even born yet are going to be taking the test in twenty thirty-seven and twenty thirty-eight. But the only way we can earn four out of four points, that blows my mind, I don't know how they got away with this, but if we hit every target, we're on seventy-five percent. Yeah. So let me show you some more data that we actually had some growth. So, this is an elementary school, this is thirty percent of the domain three category. Now, this is where we talk a lot about being focused on students being at meets and masters. This is where meets and masters comes into play. And so the only area where you have to be at meets or masters can count. Everything else approaches is passive. But for this target, the state is looking at star reading and math scores and the percentage of students that reached meets or masters. Twenty-four campus scored fifty-three percent of all students were at meets or masters in reading. In twenty twenty-five, we went up one percentage point to fifty-four, but the target was forty-six. So we met the target, we made progress, we met the target, we got three points. Yeah, yeah, we did great. That's exactly what we needed to do. For us to earn four points, we would have had to have been twenty point higher. Seventy-three percent of our kids would have had to have been at meets or masters for us to earn four points here. Looking at our Hispanic population, they improved from thirty-three percent to forty-one percent on reading at meets and masters. That's not just passing, that's our Hispanic population went up on meets and masters to forty-one percent. The goal was thirty-nine, we achieved our goal, we got three points. Um, our white population, we did drop, the target was fifty-nine, we hit the target, we got three points. The only area in reading where we did not get all of our points was here on our high focus group, which I'll remind you, that's any student that falls into any of those categories. We did show improvement, we went from thirty-two to thirty-four, but the goal was thirty-seven. We didn't quite get there, we didn't earn two points, but we did earn one point. So we saw progress in reading at the meets and masters level, and we earned, not ten points there. Um, on math, this is this little tiny.
That is alive.
Little thirty percent.
Yes, correct there. Just wanted to make sure I was still right.
Yes, that's it. Um, on math, and I really wanted to point this out, because I know we talk a lot about us not seeing progress in math, but we are seeing progress, which is not where we want to be yet. For our meets or masters, last year, we went up three percent, so we went up from forty-one to forty-four percent. We were not at the target yet, the target was forty-nine. And as we continue to make progress here, we will get closer, I think we will hit that goal this year.
Is there data to see how many zeros are calculated in the back?
That's forty-one.
Yeah, any, any of the data, like if, if you.
To know how many students are scored zeros.
Yeah, how many zeros are.
Yeah, I can look at individual student data and see how many students their score is not.
I'd be curious to know, without any of those zeros, when you score, because technically, what we score and how we did it.
I would.
Oh, and you mean zeros as in the ones that chose not to tell you, you mean that we went backward because of whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had several zeros, because you're not going to go through the test, you get wrong, you just.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, for math, as I was going to say, we moved up in all students, in our Hispanic population, we went from sixteen to twenty-three percent. And then. Um, so in our Hispanic population, we moved up from sixteen to twenty-three, again, missed our target, but we did get one point for growth. Our white population made progress, we got one point for growth, and our, our high focus made progress, five percent, and got one point for growth. So on the meets and masters level for math, we made progress in every category. We just didn't hit the target, so we only earned one point for each of these categories. The state set it for the entire, the entire state of Texas.
And it changes from year to year.
It's on this, these goals are good from now until twenty twenty seven. And the next target starts in twenty seven, twenty eight, when the test changes and goes to thirty one, thirty two, and then it changes again.
But we know what, we know target is.
Yes, until twenty twenty seven.
Yes.
Yes, so we know what we are needing to hit in our subgroups.
This is gonna be a completely random question. So, we have a very small number of transfer students percentage wise in our district.
Yes.
But I know that we, any any of our nonemployee transfer students, even a smaller number are being required to take the star test.
Yes, yes.
If they don't take it, then their transfer status would be revoked.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They can't opt out or they can't sit there and do nothing.
Well, yeah. If you're an academic, they have all kinds of requirements to remain a, I mean, and we're talking about such a small number of students. But if any of those students are opting out of taking the test or doing their best on the test.
It's somewhere in the world should be a consideration.
A reflection on our.
Yeah, like. There's some changes to the laws regarding transfer students and what you can and cannot correct. What you can and cannot revoke a transfer for, but it definitely sounds impressive. Let me dig into the data and see where our primary data is.
Not gonna, it could be one, it could be one student, but.
And the guidance that we shouldn't do that anymore.
We should revoke transfer?
Yes. And they said you shouldn't revoke.
Now just touch the big screen.
We should be innovative for our.
Again, I want to stress, I know that that is a very, very small number, minute number of students that are transferring and that are not employees. So.
That's what I was gonna say, if we're missing by a percentage or two.
They're 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 high achieving, their attendance is good, they are good numbers of our community, our school community. I know that. I know that, yeah. So they add them up.
And they're not being logical. Calculations are also ethically ethnically biased.
Yes.
One hundred percent. It means I need a, an entire school district full of Hispanics.
The less diversity you have, the easier it is to score.
Because your math here says I don't need whites in my classroom. I need Hispanics in my classroom. This is. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm also.
So what I wanted to point out was even if we had achieved every single target and achieved three points in all of these, we still would not have reached thirty two points. We would have had to have hit this long range target all the way across the board to get to thirty two points. So we scored fourteen and what I've been doing with the campuses is sitting down with them and looking at specific areas and saying, where are we performing right now on our common assessment? What are, and determining, can we reach this? Can we fix, fill this gap this year? Yes, I think we can, or we're gonna get close or give ourselves a two. So we're going through and calculating at this level for the campuses exactly how many points we believe we can earn on each component, so we have a good idea of where we're gonna need to start.
So, you'll go on.
Yes, sorry. Are you clicking the button?
I was just gonna, keep going on that thought, but if you were changing the slide, don't.
Oh, I'm gonna stay on this. I can stay on the slide.
Okay. So, with what you just said about even if we had hit all the extra blah blah blah, we still wouldn't have gotten thirty two, right? Okay, so I'm gonna ask a hard question. Were we unable to hit those blah blah blahs because we are where we are and have been for the past however many years? Take away all of the COVIDs and the no accountabilities and all the things, I'm just asking if, is asking that, you're following.
Why are you saying our current number?
Is that reflective, our lower current number that we have? Is that reflective of? Down here and so like we maybe could have hit those thirty two had our number already been higher up. Is that, are you following Jeff? Right?
Yes, and you know, because there's a deal that four point gap. To get to forty, you have to reach the twenty thirty seven goal.
Yeah.
And nobody is.
So I know you can't reach the thirty two, but I think if we had hit rated a district are not reaching four out of four points in this particular piece of the pie.
I understand, but thirty two. Less than half of thirty two.
Right.
Could we have been. Yeah, could we have been over half? Could we have been two thirds of the way there even with a four point? Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where the numbers fall and what that.
And what I want to point out, and I think we've seen traditionally is the focus that we put on reading is paying off because we hit the target in reading in all three of these groups. We hit the the this year's target, and so we got our three points in reading. Sorry, I'm having acclimate that right there. I'm watching. So this year's target was forty six.
Forty six, thirty nine.
We scored fifty four, forty one and fifty. So we hit this year's target on reading in these three submonths. I think that's, I know, I can say with confidence, that is because we put so much focus on our reading program and and we got it solid.
Elementary or.
This isn't elementary.
And this is still just a hand.
Yes, I have one hand.
Yeah, sorry, and you can keep going. I was just trying as, because you said even if we could blah blah blah.
Right.
Maybe more.
Right. That's been extremely challenging. It's to me is quite a twisted, unattainable goal, like for any district, but achieving the three point is, yeah, that was a factor in our math course. Absolutely. Okay, I can say with confidence, we will see more progress in math this year and next year even more because if we go into a adoption and things like that, so, but but again, we are already seeing significant growth in math. And this is at needs and masters. This isn't just passing. This is how many students are at the needs and masters level on math as well. So, um, keep that in mind. We are at these numbers at needs and masters.
I know we're only a portion of the way through your, yeah, presentation, but I think this is why we as a board need to, to our community, our our growth and our improvement, um, as to why it's important to not look at just one year or two years, but we have and 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 asking for change and improvement is not something that we cannot see drastic improvement in twelve months.
Right, it is not a.
It is not a fast process and so we have to we have to give things time to.
I always like to say it's a big ship, you know?
Yeah.
Big ship takes time to turn and if you can see that incremental change.
It's easy to get frustrated that why are we not seeing more progress? Our teachers even and our parents and even a student might be like, oh my gosh, I'm trying so hard, but my, I'm not seeing a lot of progress according to the.
And I see it all, I mean, and I know I'm close, definitely I see those numbers changing and moving and students making progress and achieving master when they never had before and things like that. It's it's sometimes it's just hard to articulate on such a grand scale. So.
Okay. And I wanted to point out, the math, they've been stringing us out on the math adoption. Um, for reference, the math adoption that's currently out there, I was on the textbook committee in my other district nine, ten years ago when it was adopted and they've been telling us for years that we're gonna have a new math curriculum, have a new math adoption. And and it's just now coming to fruition as well. Well, every district, not just us, have been left to kind of pull those pieces together to to make, you know, whereas.
Well, I think there are big identified key pieces and I really, you know, told them with a plan that for that district to have them to do that.
Okay. Okay, so, the second component in domain three is academic growth. And this goes right back to what we looked at in domain two, students moving up from meets, masters or approaches to meets. And so, there are the target, the target is sixty nine, again, looking at all students that may grow. We went in twenty twenty four, we were at sixty one, we were at sixty seven in twenty twenty five. So we had more students make growth from twenty four to twenty five than ever before. The goal was sixty nine. We missed it by this much, but we were close and we earned two points. I had that little calculation. So, you will see our Hispanic population, oh man, this is fantastic, fifty three percent, seventy one percent in twenty twenty five. We made great progress with making growth on their star test. We met the target, we earned a three point.
That growth on all students is directly aligned.
Yeah.
So we got more credit for the, for the Hispanic portion.
Yes, yes. Now, if us, if we had had almost every single student they grow, ninety five percent, we could have earned four points. I don't know, I thought that was like, yeah, that's a goal. We're getting there. We're gonna get there. Um, our white population, we did see a slight drop and we did not hit our goal. We did not earn points for growth in reading on white students at this campus. And then at our high focus group, we had significant growth here, almost ten percent. We just missed the target by one percent, so we earned two. Again, same thing for math. We saw growth. We were close. We saw growth. We hit the target. We saw growth, not quite there, but we saw growth and we saw growth. So in math, across the board, we have growth on our math test.
One data point that's not showing is is it's not showing, so it's total twenty twenty five total tests. It didn't tell me the growth, but it doesn't tell me like the, oh, there it is down there. I see it. So the twenty twenty four, I was looking for that that amount of test comparison. It's down there, sorry.
Yeah.
My fault.
Okay. Okay, so academic growth is calculated based on the other scores from domain two, but broken up into subpopulations based on our two lowest and our high focus group. So in this category, we earned fifteen out of a total thirty two points. This is again, one elementary piece of this.
Yeah, yeah, so if you go back to that's what I, I thought I.
Yep.
Saw some, so you've seen twenty twenty five total tests of two hundred and twenty seven, like for the total white population, the twenty twenty five full. We we went down, our score, our growth score went down. Well, how many tests were in twenty twenty four under that same category?
Right, I have to go back and look and see, um.
I wonder if that's a factor, you know?
It absolutely is, especially when you're looking at, as we talked about in a bigger district, but in the grand scheme of things, four hundred kids, one or two kids is a big difference versus hundreds of thousands of kids in the same, so.
Um, okay, so that's our academic growth. I definitely want to show you on this one, this is our middle school and I wanted to show you this one because they earned four points and I'm still excited. So on our telepos, the scores, the twenty twenty four telepos rate at the middle school was a forty nine. Last year it was a fifty four and that did exceed the long range goal of a fifty. So they earned four points for this category. Um, most of our other are zero or one point. It is much to make progress on telepos because their language is still developing and there's just a lot of.
They do different.
Many of our middle school kids pass the telepos when they get to sixth grade because their language is developed.
That what this is?
That is a middle. But this is our middle school count. They have the best telepos performance.
And then how many students is that? I mean, approximately?
Uh, this this campus, there were ninety three tests.
So that would be sixth, seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, so they had a ninety three.
So they had ninety three students that took the telepos.
And and this cap, this is another piece that's changed a little bit over the years on what you have to achieve to get there, but um, Miss Ospia is doing a fantastic job. Presentation of.
I know what she's doing and she really had a, she's doing great work.
Whole portion, domain three for elementary and middle schools is star performance. Again, going all the way back to domain one, looking at how many students, that average of the averages, taking that sto, that goal, that target score that we saw in domain one, which was a fifty. That was our component score for this campus. It went up from a forty six to a fifty. The goal was forty seven, so we earned three points. And then they break it down and look at the star performance for each subhop and then the points are awarded based on the targets. So we earned eight out of sixteen points for overall star performance on this campus. This is an area where if we continue to see growth, well, our Hispanic students, they're going to start passing the test. Because remember, growth can happen even if they don't pass. They can go from low, did not lose, and get growth points. But I believe strongly as we continue to see growth, these numbers are gonna come up with our Hispanic population as they continue to develop language and and improve in that area. So, this is star performance for an elementary school. One of the only differences we see at the high school, instead of looking at the growth measure because it's such a small measure, uh, we look at the federal graduation rate and the C federal CCMR um, rate, rate for the campus. These are slightly different than the state CCMR and the state graduation. If you remember, our state CCMR number was an eighty six. For our federal CCMR, we have an eighty five, but the goal was sixty three, so we hit. I'm not exactly sure what the difference is between the two. I bet Dr. Next could tell us with ease, but it's very close. Number, but so we look at our federal CCMR, the difference at our graduation rate is they don't like to take the best. If you're hot, not three, you get your four year graduation rate and that's it. That's it. So that calculates for ten percent of domain three and CCMR federal counts for thirty percent of the domain three.
So on your percent graduated, that was like in twenty twenty four, ninety four, ninety four, ninety five percent. I remember it may be wrong, but I thought we were graduating like ninety eight, ninety nine.
Ninety eight and twenty three too.
So what, I know what the state is saying, but I'm saying whatever.
Right.
Whenever we have, it ain't saying we're graduating, this this number just seems, I don't know, four to five percent lower than what I remember us having the last three to four years.
Sure.
Where's the state coming up with these numbers?
I hear him wrong. Nat shot date, dropouts that we lose over the course of the year that may have been here at the beginning of the school year, they leave school, even if we can't find them. Or they're still trying to finish their star test or things like that. So when we say we're graduating ninety eight percent, it's ninety eight percent of the kids enrolled at that time, but the state's looking back at the kids that were enrolled back in October and trying to track how many of those humans who graduated.
A hundred are late spits off. They not tend back for even just a week or two in the fall of the next school year to finish out a course or to finish out, you know, just.
But our graduation rate, let's just count those kids, even if they're not part of.
If they're down in the five year.
Oh, I get you.
So that's why that rolled up, you might be seeing whatever percent now, but then when it becomes a five year, it's gonna capture that. And it's last year, so if he's a freshman and settles four or five classes, they're still a freshman his second year. He's not gonna count on the four year graduation rate with that. He's gonna count the five year graduation.
He will count, but he will count as if he's not graduating.
So, yeah. You're right, well, we graduate, we graduate. Okay, so just to sum up the domain three, when we look at how everything is calculated, again, elementary schools, we have that star team in math, it needs a masters, we have growth, they have telepos and overall star performance, that is all weighted, the the points are totaled, it's weighted, we get points, we get a total number. Same at high school, we look at the meets or masters number and then our CCMR weighted. Points are given and we get a total number of points.
But that's only the colorful part of that circle.
That's just that, that's a little thirty percent. But that counts for everyone. So this is where we have to start looking at the org. This is where the orgs come in. So I'm gonna show you each of our elementary schools and how their campus was rated. So on this campus, you can see from domain one student achievement, this four, this campus scored a seventy two which was a C. For domain two, they have domain two A, the growth number was a seventy eight and the relative performance number was a stop touching it. The relative performance was a sixty six. So when you look at all of these numbers, the seventy eight was the highest, so that calculated for school progress right here, so percent of this campus. So percent of this campus is overcame from this seventy-eight right here. Because it was the highest of the three options, seventy-two, seventy-eight, seventy-six, it was the highest of the two. So seventy percent of their score was based on academic growth, students making progress year over year. So domain one, two A, and two B could be whatever those numbers, it ended up being a seventy percent, and then that multicolored circle, domain three is always there. So those are one, two, or three options, and, okay, and domain three always counts for thirty percent.
Got it.
Yes. So this campus scored a sixty-six on domain three, so that was thirty percent of their score, seventy-eight. On domain two A, that was seventy percent of the score. All the calculations went in, they earned a seventy-four, this is an overall of the domain. Domain one was a seventy-two, domain two A was a seventy-five, two B was a sixty-two. So again, academic growth was the highest, so that was seventy percent, and then domain three, they had a seventy-two, which was thirty percent. So even though these two campuses' scores were a little bit different going in, they both earned a seventy-four overall, so they earned a C. So for these two campuses to be at a B next year, they need to bump up six points. I would say our goal for these two campuses is to be a seventy-eight for next year. That will bring the district up overall, but we will see growth on star performance and academic growth on these campuses based on what I'm already seeing, and that's gonna pull everything up. So we're gonna see growth everywhere, but I anticipate a seventy-eight for both of these.
I'm gonna go back.
The OR is what I was asking for there, that A, if the higher of the three, like, I looked, I got the Portuguese, and that's what I said earlier.
One of the three.
Oh, it's not the higher.
So there was the Portuguese.
Okay, so I was, I was.
Saying though, the needs or masters count, one of those was the higher.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's one of the three counts at the seventy percent. So I'm, I'm gonna go back to Craig's question, okay? This is another hard question, I'm gonna ask it. You're talking about jumping, you said we're anticipating a four-point jump, right? Okay, so what are we doing differently that's gonna get us those four points? Cause I'm, as crazy as it sounds, I actually am understanding and tracking all of the math and the calculations that you're saying, I'm following it all.
Okay.
It's all stupid, I don't.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't like it, you still just play the game. So what are checkers, or not checkers?
I like checkers.
Check, what's your check? That's okay. I'll be patient, wait. My ORs. If the answer, I, I, I am gonna show you some of the, some of the. So, um, so looking just at elementary and our middle school, I did want to show you on this campus, the student achievement domain one was the highest of the three scores. So their seventy percent came from domain one instead of domain two, and then their thirty percent, this campus had a seventy-six, I believe. I have to say with confidence, that, to say with confidence, that this campus will be at a B next, this year. They are well on their way, they made significant growth last year, they're well on their way. So I'm gonna ask you another question, I promise.
No.
But on our domain one, two, and three, uh, this, you can answer this later, but with, follow-up with how are we gonna achieve these things? Now, I can't go back and tell you all the things in each of those domains as clearly as I should, but are we focusing in on certain parts of the domains that are easier to bump up?
Yes.
No, we're focusing on the areas where we are already doing work, and we're already seeing progress. As soon, when I show you that, I think, I think you'll see kind of what I'm talking about, and you'll see where we're. Um, okay, so that's a middle school, middle school was quite literally one student away from you. And when I did their numbers and I started calculating, I was so mad, so I was like, if this one didn't score one question more, I think you would have been there. So at, um, at middle school, student achievement was a seventy-eight, that was seventy percent of their score.
Blew up, I think it's green.
Their student achievement was a seventy-eight, that's seventy percent, they're closing the gap, look at that, they have an eighty-two down there. So they're doing great things at the middle school, they're quite, they're really fast, they will be easily a B next year, and they will be well over their eighty percent at the middle school. And then our high school, finally, and, and as we can see, high school, they have their student achievement, their star performance was an eighty-three, so that was seventy percent, they're closing the gap, seventy-three, thirty percent. And so their overall score was an eighty, again, they will maintain their V I believe they will be higher next year even than they are this year. We're seeing great work come out of the, the PLTs and the work that we're doing in those, in those campuses, so. So that's how the campuses earn their score. So now the question is, how does that relate to the district to count domain? And we look at, can that create a percentage or a weight? So you're gonna see, of course, the high school has most, the high school carries the most weight. You'll often hear people say, so does the high school, so does the district. In many cases, whatever score the high school gets, the district is the same, because they have too many kids. We're not quite there yet, um, but they are thirty-seven and a half percent of our score. So we take each domain score, we give it a weight, we multiply, we come up with points, we add it up, whatever that score is, that's our score. So domain one for the district, seventy-eight, we're at a C. Domain two A, seventy-two. Domain two B, seventy-two, they're the same, so our overall score is a seventy-two or a C for academic growth and relative performance. And three, closing the gap, seventy-five, we're at a C. We are close, we are right there on making progress, and if this goes up, everything goes up because it's all tied to star scores. So as we continue to see student growth, we will continue to see the campuses, um, scores go up, and that will bring the district up.
Okay. Is anyone in this district okay with those Ds?
No, but, again, when one piece moves, they all move. So we know that this is based on a small section of students not performing at needs or masters, or we know it from, we know what's causing it, until we know how to fix it, and make sure that we don't have the yes of yes. And we do see, now, I'll say, this is based on, this is that relative performance, this is based on, um, the low S E S number we ranked based on that. Very few campuses count this score ever in their accountability rating because it's just this huge number, it's very odd. We focus much more on academic growth, on the student performance, and then on closing the gap, so.
Not for, I was kind of ignoring the relative performance Ds.
Yes, but, yes.
As the D, as, as the other two Ds, because I feel like that would be the, one of the first places that we could focus and make some improvements. Like, I don't think we should ever be okay with any Ds in our way.
Well, you're right, for student achievement, right?
Well, but that's the one that is based on low S E, how many, how many students have we really aligned in? So that is a little bit more skewed, it is a little bit. So I do also warn our mind you at high school, there is less opportunity for students to show growth because, English two, so we don't have a lot of tests, but.
That's what she said, it's in the legislative update.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and so I think they're gonna start taking the academic growth piece out of high school and making.
Tell them how Algebra One impacts high school growth in this area specifically since, uh, overachieving students, especially eighth grade.
So when our seventh graders take their test and go to eighth grade and take the eighth grade math test, that growth counts. They go from seventh to eighth, if they improve, they get a growth point. When our seventh graders go from seventh grade to Algebra One and take the test, even if they get a gap one hundred, we get no growth points for them because they didn't take the next test in the school.
Wow.
If they take in the eighth grade test and then the Algebra.
And that's our high, those are.
And that is our, I typically take about the forty, top forty students in our eighth grade class out of the mix, so they don't count for eighth grade star scores.
Like thirty.
They don't count for high school Algebra One scores because they're enrolled at middle school, but they're not taking eighth grade tests, they're not counting on the algebra test at the high school, they are lost in space, because those scores don't count for us. So for anyone, but.
Some schools make them take both tests?
We do have these some schools that have some different things, and the bigger the district, the less impact they have. Because like I said, in the district where you only have four hundred or so kids, that number can really impact.
How do you, how do they make them take both tests?
Like, so some of them start back at, maybe they go fifth grade, eighth grade, algebra, and they skip the seventh grade test, or something. There are several ways, I think that some of them maybe take one beginning.
I'm just saying, like, how does the state accept, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's just mind-blowing, because like, it's probably. Well, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah.
That'd be a loophole you can squeeze through.
To, to see, because we are a smaller district, and that is impacting us and our score. Do we need to start doing something differently, starting with the current fourth graders, fifth graders, that we're gonna do something different when they're in sixth and seventh grade, so that when they get to eighth grade, it's gonna count for it.
We've had those conversations when, I think, three years ago, we completely re-aligned all of our data that courses, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. But our decision always comes back to what's the best decision for kids. And we looked at the content of what was in this sixth grade accelerated math course, accelerated math course, and the bulk of sixth grade is sixth grade material, we didn't want those kids taking a seventh grade test and they'd only have a portion of seventh grade teacs. The bulk of seventh grade accelerated math is eighth grade teacs. We didn't want them having to test over something that wasn't fully covered in the course. So we made a decision with the best interest of kids in mind and what we thought they would be most successful in. It hurts us here, but I still think it sucks best for kids.
We can rehab the conversation, um, but.
I trust that you guys have had that conversation and looked at that, and, and you're reasoning that that's what's best for our students.
We're doing what's in the best interest of kids.
Absolutely. She has.
One day this.
Well, I hope you're right.
It's three times of the year, but it might change on its worth this time. Potentially from the beginning to the end.
What necessarily this was in math. I got you, I'm glad you did.
And I'm glad that the answer was, yeah, we've already, we've already looked at that several years ago, and it was a four, it's less than a case, so I'm happy. Um, so in the, long story short of all of it, there is a proportional weighting methodology that the state uses that takes each. That takes each campus of accountability rating and weights it all, and that's how these districts earn their rating. It's not always been this way, but this is how it is now. So our three thousand one hundred and eighty-nine students, um, calculate out in this manner, and this is how we end up with a overall score of seventy-seven. I haven't got any bigger questions.
Draw that with my tax, tax. Of course, with that, it's.
Hey, so before, what we're going to do, I just need to tell you, thank you for describing all of the craziness that makes up this star test. Uh, first of all, making sure you understand it, and then taking the time to be able to explain it to us on what it is. Again, we can't all agree with it, and we're never gonna agree with the test, but it's part of the game we have to play, and so undertaking that so that we can say, okay, here's what we're gonna go do to demonstrate this little bit of difference, to show the improvement, that's, again, that's part of playing the game, so thank you for doing that part of it.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Okay.
Okay.
What are we gonna do differently?
What are we gonna do differently? So we have several things in place this year that are significantly different than we thought we're doing them. So this year, we are spending quite a bit of time with our instructional leaders, looking at data, and looking specifically at common assessments. So what is a common assessment? When we have three elementary schools spread out all over town, we have third, third-grade teachers that are all over the district, getting them to teach a aligned curriculum, and making sure that every third grader is getting the same educational opportunity is imperative. Likewise, when we have an algebra teacher at the middle school and an algebra teacher at the high school, they need to be aligned. So the way we make sure that we are aligning curriculum and we are looking at data is common assessment. And we have used a number of common assessments this year, um, to look at how students are performing from the very beginning of the school year, through quarter one, through quarter two. At the district, uh, we are analyzing our common assessment data to make sure that our plan is leading to improve improvement in our identity-wide areas. So what we have done with our campus instructional teams, um, we have set them up on a Plan Do Study app. Very beginning of the year, we went through all of this with our campus principals, we broke down core data, and we took them through all of their campus data, and we said, okay, take this back to your team, break it down, look at it, tell me what you see. What trends do you see, what, what aha moments do you have, and let's make a plan. Tell me exactly what you're going to do differently. What's, what's gonna change on your campus that's gonna have a significant impact on student performance? When are you gonna do it, how are you gonna do it? And then we've come back and met each quarter, we've sat down and looked at their data, we meet with them during stat chat, we look at, um, assessment data, working through this cycling act every single time we meet with them, so that nothing is being left to chance. We don't, we don't want them to come up at the end of the quarter and go, oh my gosh, we didn't realize kids didn't know how to do practice.
Way back.
Yes.
So it's on the, what are we doing differently? So you're having this discussion at the campus administration level, or at the teacher level?
Yes.
At the grade level, what level, what's different there?
Yes, so we started with the campus principal, and then they went back to their instructional leadership, and we went to the assistant principal, the facilitator, and then they went to their department chairs or their campus instructional leadership team. That's something that is different this year. Each campus has defined a true instructional leadership team. They don't just have, oh, you're the department chair, so you're part of our campus database. intentionally selected the people they want at the table, having discussions about instruction, and they are meeting with them, and they're having very pointed discussions about what do we need to do differently? I'll give you an example. Stephanie Nguyen, she completely revamped her instructional leadership team last January, mid-year. She had people interview, they came in, and they started planning in January for what they wanted to see happen when the school year started this year. One of those things was, she wanted PLTs to happen first thing in the morning on the campus. She felt like the best possible thing for them to do was to restructure their entire master schedule, move things around a little bit, so she could call teachers first thing in the morning, meet with them, plan for their day, and then send them out. That required talking to Coach Dugan, changing athletics, talking to, uh, to Mr. Walker, I mean, it required a lot of. So that's what needed to happen on her campus this year, and it happened. Everything worked. Now, every single morning, she's meeting with math, or language arts, or science, they're having a PLT meeting, a professional learning community, and they are looking at data, and they are looking at their Friday quick check data, and they're looking at their common assessments. They are breaking down, what did we teach last week, how did it work? What are we gonna do differently this week to make sure we didn't teach last week's material? Every single step of the way, they are checking student understanding at their PLT. Same thing for high school, they put a PLT in place, they've never had a PLT system work at the high school, it's always been, that's just too hard, did it out, but they worked, they worked it out, they restructured it, and so they're sitting down and having their meetings every single week with English one, English two, Algebra one, looking at data.
Those meetings occur every morning?
Well, this first thing in the morning, high school is during, uh, wild activities.
So, so the data, what, what data are they looking at differently now this year than what they were doing last year?
So, good question, so that was our first question, what are, what data sources are we looking at that are different than we've ever had before? Stephanie Nguyen has started Friday Quick Checks at sixth grade when she was there. She took it with her over to middle school and kind of started it a little bit there, it has grown.
Oh, good.
A Friday Quick Check. So a Friday Quick Check is, as they look at the standards that they're preparing to teach, they stop and say, okay, if, what do students need to know and be able to do? This is what we do when we. This is what we do when we have our look ahead protocols once a month. We dig into our standards. We make sure teachers fully understand what is the standard? What does a student have to really know and be able to do to show math? They build a little assessment, four or five questions. Um, they typically have writing, even if it's a math test, they have a writing assessment, they have something in there that looks like the star. So they build the assessment before they ever teach their content. Then they teach and then they give that assessment on Friday. Every seventh grade math does the same one, every sixth grade math does the same one. They collect them up, they grade them, Stephanie looks at them, um, Erin DeBulley looks at them, Marcy looks at them, they look for trends. Hey, what are we missing? What's not clicking? They come back Monday or Tuesday morning, whenever their P L T is, they look at the last Friday data. Okay, they did well on this, they didn't do well, why? What happened? What did we miss? So Friday quick checks are a vital piece of the puzzle at sixth grade through eighth grade. They're using them in math and reading every single. It's become just easy to use them. It looks a little bit different in the elementary school because it's kind of quick to do a Friday quick check with them every week. So they're looking at about a two week cycle, but they're building those common assessments. They started meeting on our look ahead days, on our design days and saying, okay, for now until the next time we meet, next month. What are we going to make sure students know how to do? And they're setting up two or three mini, mini checks that they're going to give. All the students are in the same one and looking at how they can make sure every third grader is mastering the concept. And so they're meeting.
And that's different from what we've done the past three, five years.
Yes. Something else that's different this year is, so Carrie Grimsley is working with the elementary campuses and I'm focusing on the secondary. So I spend the vast majority of my time in the middle grade, some, you know, middle school, high school, having their P L Ts. Is, has set up a system, and when she told me about it, I was kind of like, I don't know if this will work, but we'll try it. Where all three elementary facilitators travel from campus to campus. And so they don't just have a P L T with their campus. All three of them go to Pleasant View and meet with teachers all day long. And then they go to Legacy and meet with teachers all day long. And then they go to R B Gottlieb. So all three facilitators and Carrie Grimsley are meeting with all the teachers every month. That way they're hearing the same thing. No one's missing part of the story or they're not getting the same training or if they're starting to see a trend of, wait, why is this second grade struggling? They're not struggling over here. What are you guys doing differently? They can see what's happening.
Horizontal alignment approach. Yeah, but, okay, so quick, going back to what you said, it's very effective, the middle school, when they have a meeting every morning. So I, I, if I understood that right, the P L T meeting is only.
People meet one day, so I can meet.
So why is it that, I understand, I guess there's challenges at the hospital to prevent that from happening every morning, but what about the elementary school?
They're doing them weekly. So they, they do, yes, they still meet, but like they'll do all day during the day. So second grade will meet and third grade will meet and fourth grade will meet.
Well, that's been starting your day meeting, you're getting a team together collectively, talking about what you're going to approach that day, check in. I just feel like that's going to be very productive. It certainly isn't a private, secondary rural, you know, business. So I would think that, you know, it'd be, it would, it would overlap well in this arena as well.
Middle school is such a tiny campus and their, their structure and the schedule works for them to do it first thing in the morning. But we do P L Ts on every single campus. We've never been able to do that.
Well, and elementary, it's the elementary campuses too are doing it. She's carrying implement it, which I think sounds great.
It's, it's tough. And it's really hitting all of the, you know what I'm saying?
And the three instructional facilitators that are going to every elementary?
Yeah.
Is that a science, math and English or?
They're advised to their elementary campus, so each elementary has a facility in there, but they are specialists in their own areas. Jeff Gass is a math guy, he's great at math, so they all get the benefit of hearing Jeff. Oh, April Skinner, I mean Amber Skinner is a language arts professor. All get the benefit of hearing Amber and listening to the conversation. So it has been a huge benefit to our elementary campuses for them to travel and do P L Ts together. Now, on the off weeks, they do P L Ts on their campuses, the principals are holding P L Ts. Um, we are seeing some of the most. In-depth, rich conversations happening this year because we are digging into the data and not just talking about what we think and what we hear. Using data to drive the conversation. We're looking at walkthrough data, we're looking at assessment data, common assessment data. Um, so I mean, I think they'll kind of go back to, so that was the big question is what data are you looking at? What sources are they pulling out? And it's not the same on every campus. Every campus has a unique need, they know where their hotspots are, they know what's important. I X L is a much bigger deal at the middle school and the high school than it is at the elementary school. They just can work more independently at these levels, but they can work through a plan, a, a learning plan and they can use that as a data point. Um, map data, we've used our map data to identify where students are progressing along reading and math. And, and so they're looking at that data. We are using all different sorts of data, but we are talking about it. We're not just relying on everything else to say, yep, we got it. We're, we're talking with them, we're asking them to report back to us, tell us how things are going, what are you doing differently? What, what's working, what's not working? We're having intentional conversations this year that in the past, we were not as intentional in scheduling and having those conversations. We were leading them up to. Oh, in chance, I guess, we were, we just weren't intentional about sitting down with them and that, having these conversations. And they've been rich and they've been amazing, so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How, how are you ensuring you have lessons learned? Success and failure, both of them are lessons learned. How are you passing that along from, I, I, I could see the campus to campus, elementary to elementary, but again, there might be some success in elementary that works at middle school. Or middle school worked well at high school or whatever.
So.
How are you doing it?
Have executive summit every other week, we meet with our principals every other week. Um, we have a time when just elementary, we need to sit down and talk. So we have wonderful opportunity for them to share across the secondary and elementary, but then we also come together and talk about what's working. Our principals work so well together. They talk to each other, they have a little group chat on the side, they don't include us in, but they communicate with each other a lot. And so we know that when they have a meeting working, none of them are like putting it away and keeping it with anyone else. They are very quick to share what's working and what's not. So, um, so as, as an example, Friday quick check is one of those things that Stephanie brought and immediately, air, uh, Jacqueline Trussell. Learned it when she was working with Stephanie and then she went to R B Gottlieb, she was like, I love doing this, so she started it out there. Well, they liked it, so now, like, if she's looking at doing it. And so it just sort of spreads as they talk about what's working and where their successes are.
So that helps to keep our small town feel up though.
Yes.
Because, you know, that was one of our concerns when we went to multiple elementary campuses is that we were going to lose that small town feel.
Yeah.
And so anytime our elementary campuses can align and work together as maybe three different sections of the one elementary. That, that's going to help us on our C V S pillar of retaining that small town.
We actually had a great conversation today about how can we start defining some things that are like, like the balloon parade is only for kindergarten. But all kindergarteners in the district do it instead of K and one and, you know, kind of creating some things that are special by grade level, but that all the grade level needs. So especially across the entire district with that grade level. Um, that came up today in a conversation. So, so something that, some of the things that we've been using, um, exit tickets, quick checks, those are. So curriculum based assessments are common assessments that are built out based on what we are going to teach. We build these assessments before we ever teach the material. The facilitators take the content, they build out a test, they go look at the star test, they say, okay, we need this kind of question and we need this level of questioning. And so they do the test, they let the teachers look at it, give a little feedback and then they give it back to us. We give this assessment at the end of a unit of study or at the end of a quarter. Typically it's at the end of a quarter, especially in reading, because it's kind of a, a longer test. So we can say, okay, we taught this entire quarter, let's stop and see where we are right now. And everybody gives it. High school has been a little bit resistant to using this and we really weren't sure why, but we had the conversation today and they were like, yeah, let's do it. They were like, yeah, let's go with like, don't let us see. Make sure that they're, you know, there's something that we've never seen, so that the kids are, you know, set on. And we were so excited about giving C V As, we're like, okay, let's do it, we have to go, ready to go. So we are going to be giving common assessments at every level, starting next semester. We've never done that before. We started until elementary and it kind of has trickled up, but we're ready to roll it out all the way across high school and theirs ready, they love it, they're excited about it. So we are going to even see more alignment of how students are performing on the common assessments as we roll it.
Or change their minds. I want to say personality change. New faces.
Um, I don't know, I don't know if, I don't know. Donna was convinced that they were going to be resistant and they just were absolutely thrilled. They were, they were excited about it. We said, yes, we'll take this and run this data. And it's kind of hard to see, I know, but I'm excited about what we can do. So I had to mask this data a little bit, but one of the things that we are doing differently this year that we've never done before is taking a star data report. So this is a report of how a group of students in sixth grade math performed. And this is the top student, they're at the master level, they've got full credit, you can see what their score is, all the way down to the lowest student. And I was, like I said, I had to mask it because it's real to the data. So we have this report that we can pull from star data. We can pull the exact same kind of report off of our common assessment. So after we gave quarter one assessment, we had all the campuses go and full data. And I can look at specifically each of these, our students are, they're also highlighted here in green. So one specific sub pop of students, I can look at them and what we look for are things like this. This student right here, J D, he scored an eighty-eight on the star test last year in math. On his first common assessment, he got a one hundred on his common assessment. So often this kid is on his way, he understood the content, he's making progress, he's moving forward. We are thrilled to see that, we want to watch him. This student scored an eighty-one on the star test and then scored a seventy on their first common assessment. So they dropped. Why? Was it the content? Was it a rough day? What's happened? We want to make sure we're keeping an eye on this student. Not a significant drop, but it's a drop. This student scored a seventy-two on the, on the first common assessment. So from star to the first common assessment, they have a significant drop down below, below the failing mark. So we automatically know from the star test to the very first assessment that we give, we can go look for students and say, how are you performing? Are you on track? Are you going to be there where we need you to be for this assessment and the next one and the next one? So each time we give an assessment, we compare how they did the previous year, how they did on the previous test. So we're tracking not just group students, but individual teams and making sure that they are not slipping, we're not losing track of them.
Well, I mean, do you have that set up?
Click on, click on finger.
Good.
Yep, and running two reports.
But running two reports, do you have to sit there and eyeball and look at it or does it come out and?
It, it's fairly easy to look at it. It's like I have here a little more difficult.
You're thinking like pivot table dashboard thing. Yeah. I already know, I understand.
But, but what we also doing, and that, that's the next thing that we're working on. So what we are doing, our campuses have built out dashboards, trackers that they're using, every elementary campus has it. Middle school has something a little bit different and high school, you know, a little bit different. But especially in elementary school, we are tracking, are these students in a special sub pop? How did they do on star and math last year? How are they doing on star and math, on star and, on the assessment this year? So we are tracking in these colors auto populate. So if they're doing well, it populates to a green, if they drop, it's a red. So with a single look across, we can see if a student, this is a, we can look across and see, oh, this student is doing great. We're continuing to see it trend up, we're reading or we have a dip in red and we need to go back and do a new teach. So this is something we talked about last year, but it just never came to me. It has died and taken this year. And all three of our elementary schools have this in place and they're, they're dropping data and, yes.
I believe that we cannot only succeed in the classroom, but we don't have support at home. So how are we conveying this information to the parents or the guardians of the students? So that they can be supportive at home when possible?
I know that the newsletter that middle school sent out was a huge hit, because that is the one piece that I believe the other campuses kind of perked up and heard the conversation. I would not be shocked at all to see more news from the other campuses. Materials that we use come with some sort of parent communication, a letter, um, some piece. Some campuses are using them more than others. Uh, we have, um, elementary parent conferences today, so they were meeting with parents and sitting down and talking about.
You're looking, you're looking for a partner kit. So this is.
And I think you were asking how this data being conveyed over to parents, not necessarily, like the newsletter for example. But yeah, how is this? Here's the data we collected on your child, I just, I just want to show you where they are, where they were last year, where they are so far this year, and where we're hoping to get them by the end of the year. Here's maybe some things you can do at home to help ask these questions, blah, 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 you know, like, are we doing it at that level yet? Parent conferences happened today and I believe, yes, that was the conversation.
Seeing.
I'm.
I see all the stuff on this.
I know, I have a kid on, two kids on the.
Dashboard, is this something we created or is this a tool that, uh, we prepared?
We created this, but we're working on, to let Nikki talk about. On, we're working with the company that's trying to help like build this out on their platform, but we didn't want to wait any longer. So we built it and it should work by then. Um, but.
Uh, one, one thing that I think is really turbo charges this year, we stopped with, oh, several, with our principals getting together, we said, yeah, we're, we're getting there, we might be able to do it next year. Well, one another principal say, well, I can't, we do that, I can't start next week. Right, and just why can't we, why can't we? And we, we started just.
Such urgency.
We, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we have a sense of urgency this year, but. And I think, and I, I talk about deja vu from a looking a lot, when you move from a small district to a large district, there's just a non-system that's supposed to happen. We've put a system in place where we're looking at data regularly. Principals know we're looking at data regularly, they know that it's coming, that there's conversations going to happen with them. Our teachers are learning that, so there's an urgency and accountability piece to that. Um, there's systems around attendance now, there's systems around look ahead protocol, there's systems around walkthrough, there's systems around all of those things. I think that there is accountability piece about being, it's not going to go out of your way, just that we're looking at this because it's important.
I think that you get a really important, um, point there in the fact that, and I never use growing challenges as an excuse, but an opportunity. But we are, we are all school district to a very rapidly growing, more less rural district. And, um, so we are seeing some challenges with that in all arenas, especially academics. So I'm glad that you guys have, have at least, um, kind of pinpointed that that is one of our challenges that we can overcome. So we are, we are well honored.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
I think we can do that job.
I think we can do that job. Finding, in the conversation, so that they can be of what's happening at school. So, yeah, for sure.
So I made a decision to dig into our accountability system and we expect to see an increase of these three things.
So let's, let's go look forward. All right, take our end of year star test somewhere in May. When will we get those results?
Early June, right, right when school gets out.
Okay, so we have the next round of data to compare to our collected data, um, in June. So we should be no later than early July, we should be able to see, here's where we are and our expectations could be set on, here's what the path looks going forward.
And we're planning our administrative returns in early July as we get this happening, we really like that. Something else we're going to do this year, um, is we are going to bring all the administrators back as soon as we get our star data back. Something else we're going to do this year, um, is we are going to bring all the administrators back as soon as we get our STAR data back. And we read through the writing samples and determine which ones we want to send back for re-scoring. Because last year, we know there were some reporting errors, but we haven't had to read and look at them in a way to say, okay, we want to re-score this one or that one. They cost money if you don't change before, but we have a system that we're going to put in place this year. Where we read all the ones that need to be given back, determine which ones we want to have re-scored, and that shift happens. So they're initially scored by A I. Yes, and A I does always, we're trying to add results, so.
A lot more than the, the T E A's methodology, but I have something I want, it's just a thought process that I want to get through real fast. I know it's late, we're in here a little bit. Okay, so just to make sense, and I have, I have some where I'm going with this, but to make sense of, of T E A's STAR ratings that we just went districts, is it fair to assume, and I know I'm, I'm simplifying it after seeing all of the nonsense, if student A gets a, uh, three four and then a ninety-two in twenty twenty-five, but student B gets a sixty-eight in twenty twenty-four and an eighty-one in twenty twenty-five, do we just learn that student B would actually have a higher conversion rate? Cool. All right, that's what I learned. So I think it's wrong to say that. All right, now, now, let me take that aside for a moment. All right, when we go back to the legislative updates, there was a new update that empowered the school board to issue a resolution to eliminate D E I and C R T. We thought that was, that's a good thing, update. Did you say? All right, cool. Well, you realize that those definitions of D E I and C R T is embedded all in that STAR. It's, it's a hundred percent that. So I say all that to say, I say all that to say that, that while I appreciate our administrators and teachers for having to navigate such nonsense and do the best they can, there's so much narrative that's pointed to us as a district when clearly Austin is where we need to be focusing this narrative, not the school board and not the district, not at a local level. And if, and if, you don't have to say my words for it, all I gotta do is just sit here and I just summarized it with a ninety-two and ninety-two. And then, and the sixty-eight versus eighty-one is going to score a higher rating.
If the sixty-eight kid is the hot focus kid, they didn't get more.
Yeah. So, but that's, but that's so flawed. Oh, I have a definition before I went to the school block. So by definition, C R T and D E I is embedded everywhere. So those legislators need to be writing some more laws to say, hey, why are we, why are we writing down limits? Because we can, we can write one day, the same thing. It's the same thing. It's the same thing. The STAR.
Monday too.
Uh, uh, it's even, that makes it even worse.
Is.
You weaponize D E I and C R T when you weaponize it.
Go to the state and battle the state instead of the people.
That's what my point was. That's what my point, that's why, what did I do? Hope all of you works on the campus. Hope every, every group that, that saw the grants can be, pays attention. Let's go to Austin with all this.
On the same team, all that, let, let's be the best godly we can be. And let's provide the best education for our godly students. That's the team we're all on, every day, every day. Um, so I go back to this and so during our staff chats, we are coming back and looking at that assessment data routinely. And as we mentioned, um, at the beginning of the year, we're looking at the previous year's data and then we look at first quarter, second quarter. We do come in and do that benchmark assessment, which is that mini STAR test to look at the overall, um, what we've learned. And then we kind of do a push from there to the end of the year to make sure we're spiraling back and covering anything students may still be struggling with. Um, but we are coming back routinely to throughout the quarter and bringing that data back up out of our staff track and data. So now I'm going to hand it off.
I do want to second what Craig said earlier. You did a great job explaining it. Very detailed and it was great. Thank you.
Did you include your extra reviews that I heard you just described here a few minutes ago? Shows a complete cycle, one year to the next, what you're doing, looking at it. I'm not trying to do any of that. It's fantastic. I love it.
I will, you talk about those, uh, those surveys for staff. I can, Stephanie Wynn's, uh, uh, surveys for culture are going to be better with those morning meetings compared to, that enhances culture. That will, that will, you, 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 you help support it and grow it.
She said that at the data meeting the other day, she said, that has had the biggest impact on everything we've done. It's been the.
The reason why it, it works with teams and.
Everywhere.
The reason in a mental software environment, there is a daily scrum. There is no more than a ten or fifteen minutes. You all sync up, move on, you go do good work and come back the next day. Reason it works.
No matter what industry.
The most.
Jump in.
But I'll be as brief as possible, but we're connecting a lot of dots. You're correct in, um, so I'm about to just show you some further evidence of walkthrough data and observations and, and how we're, um, using that to help improve instruction. But, um, according to research, the, the principal and assistant principal for that, and their presence on campus and their presence in the classrooms and with the teachers, this is found to be the second most productive level behind data-driven instruction. And so by providing that feedback to teachers, um, is, is having a powerful impact on, uh, student learning and on teaching. And so we believe in the breakthrough coach, uh, which is a model that we use where administrators schedule time to be in the classroom. Because them being everything, um, academics, discipline, attendance, relationships, all of those things. And so by being in those P L Cs and being present with them and, and where the work is going on, I've been blessed to be there and to see so many of them, the conversations that they're having are just incredible, um, what they're working with. But as you already mentioned, we talked about hope and, and all that, you know, hope is not a strategy, right? So, uh, we know this to be true. And so with that, we have the expectation that all of our administrators, um, should be, uh, performing at minimum ten weeks per week. Um, being in the classroom, giving that feedback to teachers. And so from last year, we are, we're tracking it this year. Whereas hope, we, you know, we're wanting it to be done, we're, um, requiring and.
You're trusting.
We're tracking, we're trust to verify, we're tracking it and we're having those conversations. Furthermore, we're calibrating what the, what the, um, what the walkthroughs are, what they look like, what we're seeing and then what adjustments we need to make based on, uh, what we're seeing overall, um, as a district. Yeah, calibration has been, has been huge. In fact, we're, we're having our second round of walkthroughs next week. At our staff chat, um, next Tuesday.
Are you going to cover how you're documenting that here in a minute?
So, uh, we made the decision to align our walkthrough form with the fundamental five. We believe in the fundamental five, um, and I will cover those, uh, in more detail here in just a moment. Um, looking at the data, calibrating the expectation in order to see increased achievement, uh, from our students. So the fundamental five, just real briefly, um, these are the five elements, framing the lesson. This is profound, but students who know what they're supposed to learn and supposed to do, they perform significantly. Um, and so, and so let me give you an example. Sometimes you'll probably see like, um, chapter two, pages fifteen through twenty-five, and you're going to do worksheet number thirteen, okay? Compared to, we will examine and discuss the tools and materials needed to complete an oil change. And I will independently write in my technical journal, the instructions for how to complete an oil change. Now I know, and additionally, it's supposed to be stated verbally, it's also supposed to be visual. So you can reference it, you can go back to it. And, and so anyway, those of you who know what we're supposed to do, we do better.
That's been in place though, correct?
We're in the fundamental five district for some time.
Yeah.
Yes, but the walkthrough form and the data that we're gathering is now more specifically aligned to that.
Okay.
So Simone, thank you for saying that. Some of this also is, we're not changing, we're not going from, from.
What, when I.
Strategy, strategy.
Top year.
Yeah.
Or, and I mean, that's been in place. So, okay.
Maybe we're just, um, holding everybody to the standard of using it better than.
And the, the data tracking piece of it and the calibration piece of it, and then those conversations, um, are, are deeper and more robust than they ever have.
Also, every year we have new teachers come in and we are having to train.
Yeah.
Train, like every year.
Because we've been guilty of like, oh, we did that check, you know, we got that. Oh yeah, but every year there's new and, but then there's also refresh because we, if you don't stay with it, you lose track of it and you don't even go away from it. So we've been, um, been consistent to stay on top of it. Being in the power zone, um, that is the teacher, um, being out where the work is going on, that is forming an assessment. That is providing recognition and reinforcement, actually. Um, you can stop bad habits immediately, um, you can hear what's going on.
It's a different learning style, framework of the lesson. Yes, sir. Like that's.
Frequent, small groups, purposeful talk. We should be stopping about every ten to twelve minutes to have discussion in small groups, two to four students, no more than that. But it's purposeful. It's based on a pre-planned seed question. There's a question or there's a topic or there's something that I know that you need to know before we leave, right? And so they are not passive in their learning. They're active and engaged in it. Recognition and reinforcement, that should be specific feedback, um, you know. Craig, I love the way that you, um, noticed how flawed the STAR system is. Now, there's, right, so there's, and positive, we're not saying that, to be positive, to say something, you know, um, hey, that's a great job. Okay, well, you know, about what, hey, that was a great job on A B C. You know, like fill in the blank, whatever that is, specific to what their actions were or whatever, you know, whatever they accomplished. And then last but not least, writing critically, um, which, which in our lesson frame was independently writing in our technical journal, right? And how to, how to make it, how to do an oil, how to complete an oil change. And so, um, anyway, that's, that's what these are, are based on. So when we go to the next one, so here's where we have taken all of the walkthroughs that have been, been conducted, been completed. And so this is a, this is a district view of, of how we're doing here. So about eighty percent, if you look at the blue and the gold here, so approximately about eighty percent of the time you have seen effectively, uh, written lesson frames or things, what the students are reading. The one difference here at the blue, it, we have seen that it was effectively written and it was referenced. So that was noted in the walkthrough. The other forty percent, we saw it, it was posted, but we didn't actually see the reference. But remember, a walkthrough is about a five-minute snapshot time. So they may have done it, but you didn't see it, which is why it's important for us to note when we're going into classrooms. If I come by Jeff's classroom every morning, every, you know, every day at eight o'clock, well, I'm never seeing what happened at eight forty-five, right? So we, we, we're, we're working to make sure that we're coming by and seeing at, at different times. So then, um, we will statement is visible, but it's not effectively written. It's chapter two, pages fifteen through twenty-five, right? And then about ten percent of the time, we're seeing no, no statement at all. Then for the I, not effective, but about time we're seeing that it is actually referenced. And then the numbers are pretty similar there, eleven point four percent is done, but, but could be done better. And then about eleven percent of the time that we're not seeing. So then the other elements, and this is a lot in, in, but just to show you that, um, that we are tracking this, this data, tracking this information and having conversations. So next Tuesday, as a matter of fact, um, we'll be having conversations around this, further calibration. So what we have seen too, um, in our initial calibration is we saw that, um, I believe it was at, at student engagement. We were seeing, um, it was, it was elevated, right? I mean, it was a little higher. It was on, and we're seeing that about what that student engagement looks like. And, and so it's broken down as, so it's engaged in learning. Everybody is authentically engaged and, and they're on tap. A lot of kids, you know, a lot of kids look busy and we can count them engaged, but they're actually maybe not doing what they're supposed to be doing, right? So what we're seeing about that eighty-two percent of the time, all students are engaged. Seventy-five to ninety-nine percent here and then smaller slivers above of all that. Percentage engagement.
And spoiler alert, I pulled the data for next Tuesday and I've compared from the start of school up until we did this presentation and the calibrations. And then separately from until Friday before Thanksgiving. And about ten to fifteen percent drop in the highest rating, but this is on a scale of good to great. You know, talking about all these kids are all a hundred percent engaged in these classrooms. After we calibrated and talked about what that looks like and how we're measuring that, both with principals and with A P A, ground table. Every one of these drops in that highest category by ten to fifteen percent. I think it's because we had an honest conversation about what it really looks like to have a hundred percent students engaged. What is the frequent small group purposeful talk and what does it mean to have a timer set? Do you have a frequency question? Does every, um, student in the group talk with an A or B partner, A or B or J partner? So once we defined that a little bit more and calibrated what expectations we had as a district, I think we've seen that in, in the data and I'm excited to hear principals kind of only dig into it again on Tuesday.
It sounds like. But, but those metrics aren't generated via report. It wouldn't be, right?
Well, it's upon entry into the classroom. So when you walk into the class, um, and teachers are like, well, some of the folks will mark, when we walk in, kids get busy. Well, peek into the window, um, into the class and see if students are engaged before you open the door and let them know that you're there. So that kind of changed that. We talked about, can you give them credit if they're writing and, but you don't know what they're writing about? Can't ever tell what a kid is thinking, but if it appears as if they're engaged and on task before the teacher is asking them to be reading, award credit for that, but if they're either doodling, maybe not necessary. So look at the, the product and what, what the student is working on.
Anyways, when you say, when I walk in, they get busy, further evidence that.
All right, the follow-up question about how many ago you referenced, you're really going on at eight forty-five. How are you recording that kind of information, the time you show up? What differences you're seeing from time A to time B?
So the principal's tracking that, um, and they have spreadsheets that they're, that they're keeping track of who they, because, because you could, so furthermore, you could dig down into it and I could say, oh my gosh. I've, I've done fifty walkthroughs, um, so far in these first five weeks, but forty of them were in Craig's classroom. Golly, I haven't been to Simone's classroom once, right? So we're not only tracking the who I've been to, but also, all right, am I hitting them at different times?
And there's an additional data point that is a checkbox in this that's beginning, middle or end of class. So we just didn't put that graph in here, but if you're in the first ten minutes, you're beginning, last ten minutes in the old class. So we want to try to balance those out because we were talking, like, the bell's going to ring in five minutes. So you'll just wait out nine, nine hours class to go for a walkthrough. Well, it's important to go in the last five minutes because you're not seeing the lesson close. So we saw a much lower percentage that first time, if teachers are, uh, I'll show you, the walkthroughs happening in that last, in the class, the last ten minutes of class, that shifted and it went up two percent. Class walkthroughs, this next round, so those are all results out of having that conversation around that.
And so, so while we've got some good things going on there, we've also uncovered and realized that our two areas that we need, um, we need to have, we need to improve. And that's around frequent, small group, purposeful talk and critical writing. And these two things get into becoming more challenging because they require some different amounts. And so with, so as you can see here, uh, the level of, of, uh, critical writing, uh, independent response here was at thirty-four point seven percent. And then no writing observed, forty-three percent.
And this is district wide.
This is district.
This is a district wide.
Yes, yes. And so, so we need to improve, um, in critical writing. We see that, we know that. That's a conversation we're having and in frequent, small group, purposeful talk. But if this goes back again to those pre-planned seed questions that you need to have to know, all right, they've got to be able to answer these three things. I need to focus my attention there. They need to be talking about those things. And it, and it takes that planning piece because if I'm just making questions up on the fly, they will not be as, as good of, a good of a question as what it would have been if I had planned it, correct, right?
So it's good memories.
Right. And so, and we have a tendency to ask questions when they're not planned. Right. And so, and we have a tendency to ask questions when they're not planned.
Yeah, on the fly.
Yeah, or you know, you know.
That's right. You give them a question that you know is gonna, you're, you're setting them up for success.
Right.
Rather, rather critical.
Yeah. So, so we've identified that we need to do some work there. Okay? And so then now, we've already mentioned though, that we're taking this back and we're having these conversations, right? We're meeting with our administrative team, what we're seeing and then what action steps we're taking. And so with that, here you will see, so we had back in September, we went through our walkthroughs there, walkthroughs and observations, and then next one here, twelve, nine, again in February, and then lastly, in March. So frequency, staying on top of it and being consistent with that. So that's just more to show you that we are, because you saw the campus principals and they were the compliment, the specific actually. Like, hey, y'all heard me, y'all told them doing these things and we recognize that we said it. So that was a big lift to them and so, and really to all of us. And so, and so giving them that feedback. So.
Did y'all come up with this plan, this data dive plan at your retreat last summer? Or when did, when did you guys create this, from five points of data dive?
Yes, and, but, and more in just summer and summer planning and, and talking and conversations and then, but certainly we did talk about it there.
And they just kind of tweaked and made changes, yeah.
Yeah. Because part of our, part of our meeting norms for, for our, our administrative meetings are to frequently review things. Quarterly, annually, different pieces of what we do, okay, how are we doing with that? And we've made, and we'll continue to do that. Is this working? And so because we were meeting at different intervals, came back and said, hey, we've been meeting all day. We need, we need to change those to half days. And we need half days with more frequency rather than full days by week, right? So, so we're, we're changing that because then we heard from them also, the full days, well, that's twenty percent of their week, right? If you want me to do ten walkthroughs, right? So to be able to accomplish those things, so we evaluated that system and to say, okay, so we may change it there. And then the systems and the process and the pieces of, you know, the data digs, going on to campuses and meeting with the principals, the assistant principals, the facilitators, and what they're doing, their campus improvement plans, the progress they're seeing, or the lack of progress they're seeing, what supportations like number of whole, either. So sticking there. So then, next I believe is goal number two, which is.
Melissa's coming up, I think another piece of that that Jason and we've talked about a lot, and Melissa's gonna talk a little bit about that here in the session. But one of the things that we learned is that he talks about, schools do these things all the time, but just never get credit for a lot of this stuff. It's like, you need to build your body of evidence, put your body of evidence out there for the public to see and claim that you're winning right now. So hopefully you're seeing that, like you're seeing us say, we're gonna do this with academic data. We expect to see this gain scores by the end of the school year. We, we expected to do, we're gonna do this with walkthrough data and we expect to see this result as a result of that. Melissa's gonna talk about, we've done this with our climate survey, so I'll talk about with attendance and transparency. We, a lot of these things we do, we have had other processes in place. But we're telling you now, this is all the work we're doing and we expect to see this result. And we're claiming that win right now, very beginning, and our teachers and our principals know that. But they know what the expectation is, we're not doing this just because, we're doing this because we want to see this in the result.
So I, I, this is awesome and it's, it's even better that y'all are getting so much buy-in. That the data, the changes that you're making, it's easy to see data pointing to progress, which, you know, gets people to buy in. But in my experience in leadership, the hardest part is yet to come. And that's gonna be the discipline to stay consistent. Sustainability, hundred percent, because you're not gonna sustain without discipline. And, and then the, the newness, the excitement of the win is gonna wear off. And that's figuring out to get people to stay bought in with discipline going forward.
Well, I guess I would add that that's where having the system in place is the one, is in the accountability.
A hundred percent, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why we keep coming back to that one slide where you see everything is on the counter.
Yeah.
That's, that's the discipline.
That is the discipline.
These guys, that's what you gotta have.
That's awesome.
Putting it on, we're gonna do it. And I, I, you've noticed that we keep saying, we made the decision too, that's kind of what Nikki was talking about.
So while they're trying to find their way around, have we, have we gone to the next step of how we communicate with to our community?
I don't know, I got it, I got it.
But I didn't know if you, y'all have any thoughts into it, or if we need to help with some strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, we want the community buying in on, yeah, absolutely.
Hundred percent.
With either individual student, we want the community to buy in.
Absolutely.
Not as parents, but as a whole, can you guys buy into that what we said we're doing and there are changes and improvements and goals that we're trying to drive.
And, and that's the challenge of getting all this down to manageable, because remember, this was supposed to be a thirty-minute workshop. And these guys said, there's, I don't, I said, we need to see this.
Three big things. And we didn't know what. Okay, so my part in the long queue is to continue, we're focusing on the retention, the, attracting our life-changing teachers that we want in the classroom. And so in the past, we had given a survey at the end of the year. And when we were talking about that, we're like, it was really not a very good time of the year to give it. So we were talking about how we really wanted to roll that out. And last year, we had about twenty-four percent of the complete staff that took the survey. And when we send it out, every staff member in the district has an opportunity to take the survey. And so we were like, we can't give them what they need if we don't know what that is. And in order to know what that is, we need their participation in the survey. So this is kind of our ground level goal, is to get them to understand that we need your input. We need you to tell us what you need, we cannot read your minds. So that's why this participation, so we made the decision to give the climate survey to staff three times a year. And we decided to use the same questions with each school and department. And we expect to address concerns and celebrate staff in a more timely manner, which will lead to staff attainment and retention of highly qualified, life-changing teachers. To give it at the end of the year, and although eighteen percent of those people that took the survey are potentially not even coming back for next year, that doesn't help us make changes for people that are gonna be here. So we needed to address that area. And so we did our first survey at the end of October, middle of October. No, I'm sorry, end of September, and then this presentation was end of October, because it kind of fell right before the fall break. It's when we gave the survey. And so we used one of our stat chat sessions to go through the survey principles. We know in the past, we've given them their data and we just expect them to go through it and make sure that they're addressing it. But we wanted it to be more, in, in a more structured manner. So we compiled the district data and took them through this training with that data and then gave them the opportunity in that session to then do the same thing with their data and walk away from the stat chat. Because as of previous principal last year, that's the hardest thing. You leave with the to-do and then a minute you step foot back on the campus, everything that you missed while you were gone has exploded and then to find time to get back to that is a struggle. But we wanted them to walk away with a plan. So I'm gonna kind of share a part of that with you and then at the end, I'll have some data that you can walk away with as well. So we alluded to John Tanner, who is the leader in the C-BASS, the community-based assessment, assistant assessment. And we actually did some training with him recently. And we were fortunate enough to be able to be the only campus. So we got one-on-one time with him to really work with us and a number of us attended that session. And one of the things that he talked about that really put it in a good light for all of us was when you're looking at your areas of focus, and you know, we bring to you guys our pillar coding system. But what he said was think of it like a ship, that you have your ship at dock. You're still doing things on it, you don't want things to go wrong, you don't want things to corrode, you don't want things to go, but it's minimal. You're just keeping it okay. So that is your ship at dock. It's still doing work, but you're not really focusing on it. Your second ship is the one that's preparing to go to sea. Now you have to up the level of work that you're doing on it. You're having to load your cargo, you're having to make sure you have your crew, you're having to prepare out to be ahead of you. And there are small changes that are happening at a faster pace. And then the third ship is your ship that is about to sea. This is the big change, this is the risk you're taking. Sometimes it's gonna be smooth sailing and sometimes it's gonna be some pretty rocky waves out there. So it can be even different depending on your voyage. And so when we thought about that, we're like, oh my gosh, that makes so much easier to tell people that. It's not that we're not doing anything with these ships that are at the boat. It's just we're not as intense about the things, it's a smaller amount of work. So what we did was, we took the survey data and I've shared it with them, so the district, this is the district data that you're gonna be looking at. And we had a little breakdown so that they could understand. So we had, when they took the survey, you could click on there where you worked. But I might work on a camp, I would click cafeteria worker and the campus, so that we were representing all of those areas. And when camp, when the cafeteria looked at their data, they were seeing your input. And when the campus was looking at their data, they were also seeing. So three hundred and thirty jobs that people represented by two hundred and forty staff members. So that shows.
Pretty different job.
Job assignment, so.
Codes, if you will.
Correct. So cafeteria, the G six, or I am a custodial worker at the high school. Well, that's two, I, I checked two boxes because I'm at the high school, but I'm also.
Job categories, would you say there were?
So there would be all of the campuses plus the department, so maintenance, transportation. And you know, some of our transportation people also work in the maintenance department, so they had to click two. So it was all of our head of purchase. So teachers that drive a bus would pick two.
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
They could pick two?
How many, they were, they were two, both, but they would call their transportation, yes.
Also, they're taking a sort to, to the corresponding box that they selected.
You not have input in all the places you work in the.
A hundred percent, yeah. And there's, so teachers, administration, I'm just trying to wrap my head around a few of those.
Everyone, they, the, the, yes, administration, transportation, cafeteria, maintenance, custodial, and then all of your kids. All your kids.
How many people do we have in our district?
So we have five hundred and fifty that we consider, that's even our J C N S A employees that work for us. I would, I weeded out the ones that, even though we employed them, they primarily work in the other districts. But if they did work here, I.
But five hundred and fifty people on the paper, right?
Yeah. And two hundred and seventy took.
So I heard you say twenty-four percent.
This, this year.
This, this year's back. For last, for, for last year, at the end of the year last year, twenty-four percent of the people took it. And our goal was thirty-five percent, so our goal was already up to fifty percent. Good question.
Why doesn't everybody take the vote, Jeff?
So I think part of it is, it's, you're, you're not giving, you're not ever gonna get full participation. People think that they're gonna know.
They hundred percent participate in, in paycheck, like, do participate in that part.
This part is, it's still convincing people that it's anonymous. People still don't always believe you when you, when you tell them that this is an anonymous survey. Some of our population that we might need to give them the survey in a different manner than on the computer, some of our individuals don't access the computer maybe as frequently as they should. So I think there's a different number of factors, but I think for us already to be up to fifty percent of the beginning of the year, whereas the end of the year last year, we were at twenty-four percent, is a pretty good amount of growth. So, so I did send, at the beginning, and that was part of my strategy, was I just wanted a raw result, like, you know, where are we at? There will be a big, I'm sure, push for it.
Questions were total?
So there were, I think, ten questions, it was a very short survey. Really disappointed. Number of people, so.
All father could you do is start, we need you to be calibrated.
So out of this survey, what we did was, is we, it, it gives you a breakdown in the, to what percent of the survey went back to each campus. We just wanted to see that in terms of, it would be a little more concerning if, let's say, G six was twenty percent of our survey. They have the smallest staff perhaps, you know, our, our district. So it was a pretty equal breakdown in terms of, so twenty percent with the high school, seventeen percent PV and seventeen percent GMS, fifteen percent were district departments, fourteen percent RBG, ten percent LES and seven percent G six.
That's not how many, that's not how many took the survey out the campus.
That's the percentage, that's about, that's about. And I'm like, so you're telling me only fourteen percent of RBG took that understanding? So that's why I wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Fourteen percent of the survey were RBG.
Oh, a third of this.
About the three thirty, yes, ma'am. And so.
Simone talks to a bunch of teachers, like, did she run into somebody and said, I didn't even know that there was such thing as a survey?
And they don't, they don't look at their emails on a regular basis and they didn't know about it. Number of times, it was also on the, the principals, the weekly communication.
I'm really glad that she clarified it's not the percentage, because I took a picture and I was about to be like, confuse you.
No, no, I'm kidding. Really, this is really good representation because you can count it. Our three elementary are pretty close in numbers, but this is a good representation of about the size of the campus. So it just helps us to make sure we're not skewed in the survey area.
Why is PVES and GMS together?
They both were guaranteed, they each seventeen percent. No, I see, not seventeen. So once we had, since they had their own data, it's clear that the number of people on their staff that took the surveys, so they could look at that. And then we talked about the actual results. So the first question, I feel that my school department leadership is supportive of my work. Well, in first glance at that, you see seventy-nine percent agree, right? We all eyes go to that part. Five percent disagree. Sixteen percent didn't answer or fill out an answer before them. Why? I don't know, because it says school or department, but they didn't want to answer that question for whatever reason. So that was a good conversation for us to have with principals because all of them just look at agree and they don't almost consider, okay, well, ninety-five percent of the people who felt like they needed to answer this question felt like it was a positive. So let's be careful about how you're analyzing your data. And then I feel the difference now. So what we tried, we tried to make sure that this was on about their direct department and campus and then a chance to correspond in a similar fashion to the district. Knowing that typically, any survey you look at, the further you're removed from someone, it's gonna probably be a little bit of a, a less number. But we want to make sure they're still in close coordination. So like I said, you'll walk away with these numbers, I have that, but I know it happens, I'm gonna give it to you now, so.
Hard to see. You can click to the next one in the class, but are there opportunities when they're answering these? I'm assuming this is a one through ten scale or a eight through, whatever slide that you got that is there an opportunity for comment?
Yeah, so on each question, there's not, but I'm going to show you the open-ended question. And the choices that they had were strongly agreeing, agree, this is not, not agree. So this one is leadership is supportive of my work. The school department is effectively communicates, once again, some strong numbers there. And then the district effectively communicates, that one was eighty-seven percent. And the district has given me the access to resources and support, so hold on to that number. Once again, it says seventy-one, but seventeen, seventeen percent, which will probably be more your department type. They, they don't necessarily think of the resource, you know, resources that they need. So that's still about an eighty-eight percent of the response. So then we asked about the professional development and do you feel safe and respected at my school or job site? So we tried to make sure that each question aligned to a pillar, so that each pillar was addressed on our questions. And then they, everyone had. And then everyone had these questions that they could type anything they wanted in. It was completely open and it gave them all the room in the world. They sometimes a lot more than others. But it was what is working well in your school or in your department? What would you like to see more of at your school or in your department? And is there anything else you would like to share about your experience in all the? Completely open ended questions for them to respond to. So those were open ended, but we did not print those out because it was just strictly narrative. So we just read through them and put them through. And so I'm going to talk about how we analyze that here. So then the last question, we just wanted to kind of give them an overall rating of great, good, okay, and poor in the area of school, department climate rating. And district climate rating. So for those, so I mean, when you look at four, we only had about three percent for the school or department and then about five, what, five percent for the districts. So overall, a fairly positive climate survey, but identifying some key areas. So we were like, okay, how do you really break this down, right? So what we did was I took it and we fed it into a couple of different engines. We typed in, put in the survey data. And, but we put it into two or three because we didn't want just one feedback. And they all aligned very closely. But this one, this particular one, you're right, is GPT. And we said, okay, what are, what are our takeaways? What are our positive takeaways? What are our negative takeaway? So our key areas that they said were our positive, which very much aligned with the numbers and the responses. Were strong support from immediate leadership, strong sense of safety and respect. Effective Kenan McKay's administration support for discipline will all stream. And then the areas of growth, district level recognition and communication, resources and support for teaching and professional development. One of my goals coming into my role, I knew communication was already something we wanted to focus on. And a staff newsletter was something that I wanted to start. It's just swimming my way through a new position that wasn't at the top, but we sent our first one out and I'll show you examples of that. So that was kind of already something I knew was going to be an area that we needed to work on. Jeff does an amazing job with our district at a glance and highlighting things. But his role is not really that staff direction.
Internal and external communications.
Exactly. And so that's where I needed to pick up some of the, the missing links there. But then we wanted to know more about the resources and the staff development because the interesting thing was, even though those, those were lower. When we coved through all of the responses, very little, if anything, was mentioned about these two things. We were like, nobody said we need this or any more of that. They didn't really mention any specifics or like, okay, now we know we need to find out more about that. So what we did in the, in this training that day was I put those seven takeaways, pulled out the old guy cut machine man. They, some of the babies were wondering what that was. I'm going back old school style. So we stuck them on the boat. And I made each one to a principal and they helped us sort them. It of course went right where we felt, everybody felt pretty confident about where those seven takeaways. So that helped us really identify exactly what we need to spend the most of our energy on. Not let these things fall off, but let's not over here because this isn't what we need to really put our energy towards. So. And then, and then the exit ticket was write a action statement that details how you'll communicate the findings of the climate survey and address identified areas for improvement. So for my example was by November seventh, the district newsletter will go out to staff. Part of the communication, the district survey results will be shared. And the newsletter will provide staff with a link to a pamphlet, which is a way for them to give us feedback on the PD and on the resources.
Take it, do it?
They all have this link and opportunity to give us their.
Not to retake the survey, right? I know I like, I like what you did there with the provide the feedback regarding the PD and resources that are needed. Because I'm, because Jeff, you're like, why are people not taking these surveys? And I can teach your fellow day and you're checking your email and you see it and then you get to the end of the day and you forget and you're doing car duty or blah, blah, blah. I'm not making an excuse. I'm just saying I could see how some people might.
All of this. Like when y'all started mentioning it, I've been very excited.
I like, I can say I really liked that you went and you took what they said about we're kind of lacking in PD. And you reminded them like, okay, give us some of these PD ideas and things that you might need. That was the one thing I was going to say about the feedback at the end of the survey is like, maybe asking some specific questions on things. Like calendar opinions and PD things, like things that we know as a district that are conversation things that keep coming around. Because again, I know.
Talk straight to the.
Yeah, I know. Like when you're giving, oh, you just, you know.
So I think part of that to me will come through the newsletter in some of the ways like that we got the PD and that. Just to drop a few of those in to get those feedback will be a better place than on a survey. Because I do think then it takes away from us really trying to get at what you buy. I don't want to steer your decision.
Form it to take the survey on your computer, logged in on Chromebook, on your phone.
As long as you're logged in through your Google account. So your phone, Chrome, I mean, anything that you've used your Google account. Because it, it only would let you take it if you're a part of the Godly Highness team. That email survey. I didn't want some random person taking it from outside. So if you could log, if you logged into your Google account, you could take whatever device you wanted and it's through Survey Monkey, which is a very. One to. Okay, I can do that. So here's an example of it.
Can you just put it on that?
Distribution.
Is it actually all the campus newsletters as well? I think it does, but we can let them. If they'll just email that to the board or send it to somebody. So my first newsletter went out on November, it actually published on the tenth. It quite hit the seventh. Because I was trying to get a couple of more pictures in there and was struggling with that. But anyway, it went out on the tenth. I kind of gave the lowdown to them about the district survey, you know, where we found some positives, where we found some negatives, the overall chart. And then they had the opportunity to take the, to answer the pamphlet. So if you've never done a pamphlet, what it is, is just like a big flat workspace where you can put a bunch of sticky notes. And if somebody has put a sticky note and you agree with them or want to make a comment on it, you can give them the column to do the PD needs. And needed resources and these were some of the things that they just stuck on there. So when we were thinking of resources, we were like, oh my gosh, like we feel like we're making sure that they had all their books and they, that isn't even what they needed. What they were talking about was people, time, special red was a very hot topic. That was the area that we were getting the most feedback in. We need more support. We need more individuals. We need, you know, a lot of paperwork, those kinds of things. So that was very enlightening. Instead of us thinking we need to go buy one more workbook, that's not what they were saying. And then in terms of professional development, there was kind of a rate of feedback on that. But once again, it was talking more about how we organized it and the time and the. So it gave us some very good information. We're in a depth thought. So this was how we got the information back to the staff on the district level. So then what we did in this training was when I finished and all of us worked together on it, when we finished demonstrating the district. We then had them do it. I gave them a map. I made them, I made them go back to the Mr. Ploddy's thought inventory. I gave him votes. I made him write it and I gave them a map with it divided into three. And they sat down and they sorted their vote right then and there. Knowing that they needed to go back and talk to their leadership team if they hadn't had a chance. I wanted them to get their thoughts down and walk away with that. So they did that. And they haven't write me an exit ticket about what their strategy is going to be to communicate that and close that feedback loop that we've talked about. So all of them have already done that and thoughts and ideas. A lot of the campus data was pretty in line, but some of it wasn't, you know, their needs were a little bit different. So what I had them do was kind of go back in and how we did it last year. Where they pinpointed from you the areas of streams and areas of growth and our next steps. We did that for the district and each one for the campus. So I'll give that to you guys. So you'll have that. Of what they identified as their action steps in terms of. And then on the front, I just gave you a district data chart that created the chart.
And that's the info from the principals for campus. Is that what you were saying?
So yes, there's one for the district, but then each one's labeled at the top for the campuses.
That there is survey fatigue involved?
I think that they just need to trust us that sometimes when they give us their data and information, that we are going to listen and do some. I think that's a little bit too. I think it's necessary to fatigue as a.
Thank you for what I'm here.
I, but I think if they keep saying, we're planning, you don't tell us, you can't get mad at us. You want to have something to say, here's your chance. And so I think before we come out.
Literally the same speech.
And stress that it's anonymous. We're not going to come to you and say, why didn't you write that? You know?
People that didn't participate. I'll say the reason I'm, I feel like all, this, this matters more than everything else. Like all the other stuff matters for sure, but this is what creates culture and culture with nothing else. So we can have all the pillars and all the plans and all of it, all the, the dashboards. But without the, the right team and the right culture for that team, we're not going to lose. And so this promotes that culture. This, you know, this gives us the pulse on it. And one of my favorite sayings, I love your deal right there. One of my favorite sayings I use all the time is, as a smooth C never made a skill saver. So yeah, we're all right with all those waves and all the rocking under the boat. That's all good.
Things that I think that came out of our conversation, and I think it actually came a week later. Ms. Nguyen had taken her baby and gone back and she said, you know what I think was the most impactful? I'm happy that they're happy. I want teachers to be happy, but they can see the vision. They have a purpose and they feel like we're all working for the same goal. And they're happy because they know what we're working for and the, yes.
So are we going to incorporate questions along those lines into our future surveys?
So I don't know how much we want to change the specific survey in terms of questions that we want to ask. So that would be something we can certainly talk about. We do want to be consistent with these questions that we ask just because I don't want to change them all up and then not be able to have that comparison. The other thing that I was thinking was if there are specific topics that we want the feedback on, putting those in the newsletter and getting us, you know, if there's specific things we want to hear about that aren't just an overall climate type situation, then we need to ask those in a different way. I don't want to muddy the climate survey with specific questions. So I think now that the newsletter is coming out, I got some great feedback on the newsletter. Teachers were excited. They're like, you know, you're, it wasn't talking about how good the students are, but it was talking literally about them. And they like to see them. They'll just like.
Them, praising them, district wide, all the things.
I think a way to take what Greg said and Simone said earlier is if you, if you keep these open ended questions the same, parentheses at the end, to give maybe some specific examples. They can point their, their dialogue to those specific examples. That's a way to insert. Yeah, exactly. When you're framing.
You're framing like at the end of the day, not like, you know.
So the next, the next one is going out Friday. And so this is going to mostly be kind of more of a celebratory newsletter, kind of closing out the year and some Christmasy things. And talking about some of the, you know, progress we've made for the semester. So I would say we'll leave the newsletter some focused topics on, that that would probably be the better one to add some. And then the next survey will go out at the end of January. Will be the next full survey.
First one was early in the year.
September. It was last week of September.
Last week of September, year, essentially the first quarter.
Almost the first quarter.
Almost in the first quarter. And then you're going to get basically the middle of the year. And when's your third one?
Is April the twentieth, I want to say, at the end of April. We wanted to keep it, last year we did it in May. We felt that was a little bit too late. So we're going to put it. And so the goal would be to sustain or improve upon the fifty percent participation. Because sometimes I think the middle will probably be, will probably be higher. But sometimes that end one can be the one that's a challenge. So that's probably when I'll. No.
Was there, was there much, if any context of referencing the school calendar?
We had one person. On one campus out of all two hundred and seventy-two that put down, what was it?
Very vague, coming about four day, four day weeks, but it was, there was one comment about forty weeks, but it was just.
But nobody else mentioned anything to do with the calendar or the day or. And open comments. And like you said, I mean, in my, we didn't steer them in any direction. Yeah, they have.
I guess I'm trying to connect that if it's, if that was a hot button. And if they took the survey, then they had to count. If it was a hot button and they didn't take the survey, it didn't really matter.
But is that, I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate here because I'm the one that's been, multiple people have come up to me recently and I've already said this to everybody. I'm going to be torn on it. I'm not one way or the other. But we're talking about culture, right? We're talking about keeping these great educators, keeping the momentum going with all the things. Is that something that, I mean, to me, just because you haven't seen it or heard it on a simple feedback question on a survey. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's not being talked about. It maybe just means that people don't. Either they don't have it or they don't know that they should have played or they don't. I think it's like. And if I put this on here, this, I think is going to be amazing. I really love this point. And a great survey platform and experience and all that. And so they do have the mindset, like you said, like, oh, I'm going to put this on here and nothing's going to be done with it. So my mindset on this particular topic is, do we sit back or do we get proactive and us lead the charge? And champion like, hey, we love y'all. We're doing this. We're having this discussion because we know this has been a thing. Or do we wait and that, you know?
We can be more pointed at the survey, but here's the problem is while I love the survey, you have more people that don't take it than do. Because we, we rounded up about fifty percent. I don't think I didn't catch that. But it, but it's hard for me to trust it. You know, like, I don't, I don't want to get, I'm, I'm excited about the concept. You, but, but not this one.
We here to this. The next one.
We're chugging along.
We are. We're making improvements. And there are more people that take it and say, oh, yeah, I took that. To the teacher that they did next to, next to, they're going to be like, oh, you took that and nothing happened or, oh, wow, I totally forgot you did that. I'll take.
Hey, it may be a message from us and, and those campus spotlight, when we say that, hey, we really care about this survey because it's our way to hear from you. And that coming from us to encourage that and, and, and to reinforce that's anonymous. I don't know how I could on the agenda for us to say a few words about it, but you know, if there was some way that we could mention it at a board meeting to encourage at those campus spotlights, I mean, there's a lot of teachers there.
And it'll be coming. I think you guys should have a board meeting before the one in January. So we can talk more in depth about what we want that specifically to look at. Let me get to, so we'll have our conversation at the stat chat, the next stat chat. And then the last part that we'll do was the professional learning opportunities. Arnie and Jason already talked about a lot of the opportunities. But one of the main ones that we have listed was many conferences and we made the decision to hold those at the beginning of the year. And we're planning another one for January PD. We expect to provide staff with the professional development that will impact their instructional practices that lead to high engagement. And the increased learning as we're plugged in on the walkthroughs. And so we did the one in August. It was kind of our first go at it. It was those two flex days before the teachers had to come back. So totally optional. A lot of them had done other things throughout the summer for their flex times. The presenters got to pick their topic and choose what they wanted to present with sixty-two presenters. We had forty-three participants, which wasn't a high number, but that doesn't include our new teachers who were also there that day, who also attended some of those sessions. who were also there that day, who also attended some of those sessions. This was just returning staff, I didn't want to put the new teachers in there because they were already decided to go. Um so these were some of the topics that we talked about, and they signed up through our mobile line. So the next conference that we're planning, um it's still very much in the planned phase. Um uh we're all working on that and have a meeting scheduled for this week to start getting that. Uh but but we'll use the public topics that they shared with back with us. And then also we had the principals and facilitators and just anyone tell us, what are some things you're seeing when you're getting those classroom, who can we invite to come? Cuz some of those teachers are willing to do it, they don't wanna say they wanna do it, they want you to kinda like ask them, like, I'll see you do this, please come present this. I'm like, okay, you know, I had a group that hated to practice, you know, I'll help you. They did it and they loved it. So uh we're in the works of getting that plan for one of those things. Uh have that in June. So that's how we will um in those schools. Great job. And. And we're in the home stretch, y'all. So goal three is a safety security goal, but it's tied to attendance because we feel like kids feel safe at school, they will come to school more often. And this we brought into um our epidemic goals as well, because we can teach students if they're not here to learn. So we made the decision to allow our attendancy and attendance systems across the district and just monitoring attendance and inside and frontline in their early warning system software. We expect to see a half a point increase in attendance this year as a result of efforts. Due to dashboard of sorts, and it really marries a lot of different pieces of data together so that you can have all of these little things kind of up a button. The first place I wanna talk about is just a district overview, so um they have several different um guided analysis pieces where you can log in and see different data parts of um your district's demographics. So this is just an overview, it shows you the number of students by grade level, by campus. It breaks it down by ethnicity, by social ed status. Um it it pulls um the number of ESL students, it pulls males, females. In fact, we have four percent more males in the district than we have females, which I thought was weird, I thought it'd be a little more even. Um but this, you can scroll down on this screen and see pretty much any kind of demographic data that you want. Being pulled from our uh scour, our student facilitators, counselors on this. Um when Dr. Paul was talking about those subgroups of students that we need to target, I can come in here and I can click on third grade at legacy. Um I can click third grade legacy, sped, low socioeconomic, and it will show me a list of those students. And then it'll tell me exactly how many of those are enrolled at legacy, meeting those criteria. I can click on that and it'll give me their names. All of that, so within three clicks, whatever demographic data we pull, I can see that special pops and target.
This is, I should know the end. This individual education.
Four percent of our district students are special ed and have IP. These are the students that are not considered special ed.
Okay. Okay.
They don't.
Well, I read that. They have a special ed, but don't have an IP.
No, this is saying twenty-four percent of our population is sped.
Okay, and has an IP.
Yeah. So another um hot topic for us this year has been attendance. Um frontline pulls in attendance, grades, and discipline are the big three that we're looking at right now. It also has TCMR, we can pull back that in, ACT, SAT, CBA data, we're building up to that. These are the big three that we have rocking and rolling right now. There's a couple of things to note, though. Um frontline pulls attendance a little differently than the state pulls attendance, and a little differently than protrude, so a little bit. Um you can see here, by campus, um chronically absent for frontline is any period for any part of the day, campus is fully absent for them. So this really reflects at middle school and high school, because a kid can miss five uh days first period and five days ninth period, but they are not truant. Um or chronically absent by state standard, because they're not in the same class period. But frontline pull that is ten absences because they miss any part of the day or not at time. So this is a higher indicator of hours than what the states. It tells us we have to monitor or measure, which is, I think is a good thing because it puts them on our radar a little bit quicker. But the same way you can click in and buy those subgroups, I can click high school, um I can click eleventh grade, I can click fed.
Student indicator, right?
Yes. I can click into each of those things, I can see that our our sped students more absent than our non-sed students, our boys more absent than our girls, our Hispanic students more absent than our American students. Try and look for trends in those kinds of things.
Can you uh platform like uh according to like uh if they're in the band, or if they play football, or they're in FFA? Because I would imagine that there's kind of a trend that maybe some of our students, or a late game, are absent or late to school. Or after a big band competition, are we seeing a an attendance drop? Or the, I mean, can we do that as well?
We can um track activities in here, we're not quite there just yet, but we can, we can get there. Um and this is, this is not extracurricular absences, these are excused and unexcused absences. So students are gone for standard or athletic or doesn't count here, but there are a lot of times that could miss first or second area.
And where sixth period would have that high of absenteeism compared to your adjacent classes, if it's so.
Well, and it's called attendance data, they have low attendance for the month of November. Um we've been hearing somewhere there's a font going around. So um, you know, that will be a data point, if you go back and pull and see, already it's, are they missing TMA's, which is a medical. Like that, so. I kinda mentioned this, um I told you how frontline pulls data, but there's also two other attendance methods that we've gotta talk about. Truancy is when students go to court. This is for unexcused absence only, so they're absent, they don't, they don't have, get a year. Um son of court parents, it's not anything that would excuse for any reason, these are just great unexcused absences. For truancy, you can get ten of those absences within a six-month window before we file a court case. That is different than ninety percent attendance. Ninety percent attendance, you have to be in school present for ninety percent of the class day, to be able to earn credit for a class. This really, it pertains more to middle school than it does at lower grade levels, but we still track this for our lower grades and conversations with them.
Is that excused with the doctor's note, with like that ninety percent specifically goes on asking, so I.
Anything counts for ninety percent except for school-related extracurricular absences. So medical note, parent notes, excuse and unexcuse count for ninety percent attendance by state law.
So avoid missing a bunch for doctor's appointments, could get in.
Could, but then there's the tax review committee that looks at those instead.
Would give him credit.
He's got a medical condition, we're gonna account for that, he's maintained his grades, all those. Otherwise, we're not gonna have them come to Saturday school, we're not gonna give them seat time for this class or like that, so. Which kind of leads me to this, which are the interventions that we have in place for attendance and truancy on our campuses. So the first two are kind of a proactive approach, we have attendance indicators to get kids to class. Then there's given every campus some money to incentivize that. Um and then we've got parent square, instant notifications back up and running after our switch to Skyward Q, so you should be getting notifications when you're getting a class. So we standardize across the district expectations for sending letters home, three, five, seven, nine, eight notifications to parents. Um for truancy at nine days, we also have contact. And contact, and they make a phone call home at different stages in there, they make phone calls home, they require a parent meeting, they buy the parent coming up, and a lot of principals. So there's lots of interventions happening in between there. At ten days, we do refer them to court, have them judge if they're truant. Um and then for ninety percent, if they miss more than ten percent of the days, we start Saturday school or morning detention where they have to come in before after school to make up those seat times. So there's lots of interventions going into place. I think what's new this year is that this is, I don't know if it's been fired for this year. So we've identified the individuals responsible for these things, um and we're meaning to make sure that those are followed, being followed through and happening. Another data point in frontline that I think is really important, because if you don't have good attendance, there's a chance you're not gonna have great discipline, um or there might be something just unwise. The end school. Uh conflicts in other areas. So the big five will show us incident referrals. It'll show you by month, it'll show you by day of the week. Um this brought up a question, why are there some things we're probably wanting to do? The principals thought maybe it was a hangover for Friday, that they happened at the day, and they just didn't get taken care of until Monday. So we talked to principals about it, to make sure you record the day the incident happened. And you can sweep so deep to see if there's spikes in discipline. You put a little on really tonight. Um but it also breaks all of this down by demographics, so um the type of referral, you can see here across the district, we've had four hundred and thirty-seven cell phones in fractions. It's a large chunk of the number, total number of discipline referrals across the district. Um but there's only twenty-one kids that have had six or more referrals across the district, so that's probably a lot of kids getting their first time, they do their second time, learning their lesson maybe early in school year. Jacket by location, so sometimes we hear, oh man, there's so many discipline referrals on the bus. Well, um there's only been forty-six so far, but we've found also that not applicable are are AP, they're not fitting in where exactly. So we're calibrating that, and we're gonna go back in, and these six hundred and eighty-four referrals that had no location, we're gonna make sure they start notating because if it's in an intersection in a hallway, or it's a, if it is a playground, or it is a bus, then we need to be able to keep recording numbers and different interventions in place to support uh students in those areas. And then here, you see all of your frequent flyers. Um this data is massive that you can't see their actual names, but you can see here the top um award earner for discipline referrals is a Godly High School student, he's a freshman with nine, nine referrals.
Yeah. There was gonna be a nail on there.
No, we took all the things out for that reason. Um but it's really, it's really cool to see kind of this and be able to high-level um see trends and things that are happening inside of discipline. We've always had referrals, I don't know that anybody in this district, or really any district that I've ever been in, has ever looked at data from discipline like this, to be able to pinpoint areas in the in the campuses to provide interventions, or, you know, to be able to easily track, with this new cellphone policy in place. What does that mean and how does that reflect in our discipline data? Or academic data, we're getting there.
Oh, you're saying, yeah, teacher manager management, like, this is something that.
So there is a spot where you can see incident referrals by teacher, and you can see, oh, this teacher has.
Eight.
Five. Absolutely. Um. Absolutely, yes. Sixth period of this, yeah, this campus every day is.
All of that is trapped inside of this within just a couple of clicks.
Um the third point in all of this is grades, so this will actually track grades, and this is a grade distribution um list, so As are purple, Bs are blue, Cs are green, Ds are yellow, and Fs are red. So I can click into Godly High School, I can click that grade, I can even choose just English and see what the grade distribution for English students, English classes are at the high school or third grade English or whatever. This is connected to Skyward, it pulls grades um by grade, uh progress report, and by semester, so we can look at these in the.
And you like.
Look and see, it's like a certain, you know, like, you hear kids are like, I don't know how many grades in the grade book. I don't know if that's true or not, but can you pull and see like if a teacher, how many grades they have in? Yes, okay. You can also, this, the next two rows underneath this will pull uh by teacher name. So when we went through this with principals, one of the principals pulled up um her grade level, a E L R teacher. And she was like, man, I always hear that this teacher right here is so hard. She, she's so hard in the classroom, she grades hard, teachers, her kids and parents want, change the setting for E L R teacher in the second grade because she's so much easier. But when she actually looked at the grade distribution, I just, they were higher in the class. So then I'm wondering, is it because she's more rigorous, is it because there's a lack of student-teacher relationships and buy-in? Like it started a whole other conversation around that, because she was looking at her grade, the three teachers teaching that subject in that grade level, saying, why do I hear this about this teacher, but her grades are actually higher? Um it also started a conversation about a teacher who had more than fifty percent of their students making a seventy-five or below. Why is, why are that many of your students not succeeding in class? Is it teaching problem, is it content problem, is it tutorials, is it we're not scaffolding, are we not?
Well, the best thing about it, if you drill down the level you are, it takes emotion out of it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the best part about data.
Which goes back to why our facilitators learned about this, to help them in their coaching. Here's, it might be. There might be a real, a real reason why it's showing that, and then it's like, okay. You know, and it might be that we need to have a different conversation. Um the other thing that will show you is just Ds and Fs. Um so um Fs are in pink, Ds are in blue, then it'll also show you by gender, by uh low socioeconomic, by special ed. You can see our special ed students being successful on campus, our art students being successful. If that's a target group that we, you know, we need to focus on and star, is that reflecting in their grades here? And where the magic really happens is because our teachers are really the experts angry. Our APs are really the excellent students, and probably tell you their top ten high flyers. Our attendance clerks are the experts in attendance, they can tell you the top ten kids who have the problem. Who would never like cross-reference and triangulate it. So frontline actually assigns um risk points, so if you have less than ninety percent attendance, you get two points assigned to you. If you have between ninety and ninety-four percent, you get one point. If you have two or more Ts or Fs, you have to get two points. One D or F, you get one point. If you have more than six discipline referrals, you get one. If you have one discipline referral, you get, or two to five, you get one point. And then assigns risk level and classifies you at risk based off of indicators from those three categories. So instead of us having to go and pull all of this data from Skyward, run reports, this is all automated and right here for us. So I can click this sixty-six, and it will show me those sixty-six kids are.
Teaching, teaching, using that, like, I don't know how you would like blackout. But in 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 creating dashboards and triangulating all this data to paint a picture needs to be in an eleventh to twelfth grade course. And you have it all right here.
Yeah.
Real life, like, this, learning to triangulate this data and create the 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 dashboard and all that.
So from there, you can see kind of where the high-risk students fall. Um it makes sense trend-wise, high school has eight grades, they get the, you know, four in an elementary, so uh they have more opportunities to have more decent events. They also have discipline referrals, they also have attendance issues, so you would, they would be high levels. Um but I can click high school, I can click ninth grade, I can click on um LEP students. And again, it's gonna give me that number, and I can click on those students and see exactly what's, what their name is. And again, it's going to give me that number and I can click on those students and see exactly what's, what their name is. This is mass data. Can see what grade they're in, see their academic risk, their attendance risk, and even from here, I can click on individual students, pull up their profile.
What makes a risk two versus a risk one? And how high can the risk go?
It's like, it's a number, right? Less than ninety percent is a two points, ninety to ninety-four percent is one point.
Okay, for a two grade of this. I needed it all on one, I needed it all on one side.
It was too small, trying to make it. But then very clickable to see these students. Counselors is, these students, are they in small groups for small group counseling for you? Do these kiddos have support, support care for you? Do these kiddos have a reading buddy in elementary? Kiddos have a block at dad, the kids sit in front of them. These are the kids you target from a counseling perspective to put in some additional interventions that they are finding correction inside of school. Another cool piece is that this shows you kids that move on and off of the high risk list every week. This update, updates every Monday. So this is the Monday of Thanksgiving. So the week before that, we had eighty-one students come off of the high risk, but forty-three students come on to the high risk list across the district. So either they got grades up, or they cleared up attendance issues, or something happened that made them have better standing. But the cooler thing is, I can click on it and I can see just the forty-three students that were added as high risk. So I don't have to go dig and compare lists or.
It'll show how many times they've hit that, been on high risk or can clear high risk when you click on.
It'll just show you who's high risk dropping that way. And you can filter by, like principals have to adjust their campus, this is across the district.
Like it'd be like trips to the high risk department. Did you make, you know?
Ten trips to the high risk department. So you can see, we did this on November eleventh, we'll come back and do it in January and again in the, on the fourteenth. And as a result of taking incident attendance and truancy data like this, systemizing our supports and our consequences for attendance, I'm waiting to see a half a point increase in attendance across the district. To deal with, we've got getting off and checking the whole, I see a lot of confusion.
Do I want to bring, bring with all the data pulling to be able to, and what, what are the, what's the frequency at which we're having the conversations that we weren't having before? To do something with the data that we're seeing?
So for grades, discipline, attendance, and truancy.
Thank you.
Quarterly, and then with principals, which then they take it back to the campus and turn it around. And then on, if our design days, I'm meeting with counselors. Calibrate. Kind of the piece that Dr. Callall alluded to with this is that we are working with frontline to build that student spreadsheet into this. So that we've already got math scores, they're pulling star scores. We want CVA data pulling, SAT, A, C, 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 M R. But it's not just these three indicators, but it's a whole picture dashboard for students inside of here.
Nikki, your half a point goal, is that based on data or is it based on, is it about high or a lot of hope?
It's based on data. We looked at what we increased last year over the year previous to that. We started off the year really strong, we were point eight percent the first nine weeks of school. But illness has really hit us the month of the last part of October and the whole month of November. So I don't know that we're still at that much.
Yes, sir. Before twenty-two, twenty-four, you're ninety percent. Twenty-three, twenty-four, you're ninety-three, seventy-two percent. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, we went to ninety-four, fifth mark four. So almost, you know, a whole, a whole point. And so this year, kind of thinking that same, same thing, but also, you know, hoping we can get to that ninety-five mark that we want to get back up to that we, that we talked about. Currently, we're at ninety-five, I just pulled, ninety-five, I think, fifty-three. We were at ninety-five, seventy-four before fall break, so we kind of, because of sickness, but yeah, I think. So the principals are doing a great job of incentivizing, incentivizing kiddos staying in class and to avoid being with parents and use the students to be in the classroom as well.
And it's a hard balance, because you don't want parents bringing their kids when they're sick. We don't want to send a message that we don't care about kids being sick and that we're trying to penalize them for not being at school and recovering. But when I dig into this, I see a lot, a lot, a lot of students missing for vacation, or a trip to the museum, or just because. Missing the whole week before fall break. Yes.
He just got several stats from years prior. If you had that type of data tracking, for all of you, you'd be able to know exactly where to concentrate to get that point five. You know exactly what ten days in this quarter or what quarter, like you, you could really attack with a more tangible plan, because hope is not a strategy.
What we started talking about. Like parties on the day before a holiday, is that increasing attendance or not? So we started pulling those individual days to see, is that a good way to get students to school? Yeah, because the kids want to come with the parents, you're like, yeah, you can lift it, let's go on the. What are some of the incentive objectives some of the campuses do? It really depends, she's sick to the club game and if, or have any day that they got to put their name in a drawing, or they got popcorn, maybe on a Friday, but they had perfect attendance. Some of, one of the, all the kids are there for the whole entire class for the week and they get popcorn parties. So some of them are low hanging fruit, pretty inexpensive ways to incentivize it. And then by high school, they bounce houses and blow lives. So they, that was starting with the right people, by the way. Principal did buy a drink and they. But when I heard that, I was like, that's like, kids don't want that. And I was like, no, we're not like intentional. Yeah, but we want something that's going to actually drop it to school. Do some of the money.
Yeah, the, the office eventually will get, the education foundation to get partners to, get businesses to donate large items, because there's only so, so many things that we can buy legally with our money, like the investment, stuff like that. That's why a lot of this. Correct, correct.
Or their homes.
Because that is those items that we.
So I think you said you were wrapping up tying this all back together and all of the giant items to conclude my point. So all of these things, I have not looked at, so bad on me for not having looked into the details. So, help me just, help me connect the dots on all of this stuff coming together.
Yeah. So goal one is I think it means to see a three-point increase in score to be a senior district. That's information Dr. Callall provided to you. Goal two is the climate survey, and we have fifty percent of our, have thirty-five percent of our staff participate in the climate survey. Dr. Law provided to you. And then goal three is to see a half a point increase in attendance. And that's everything.
Thirty-five percent increase?
An increase of a one percent to thirty-five percent. For participation, I mean, it's the same that we have twenty-four percent.
Say it at the end of the year, what you can do.
I mean, hopefully it will.
That's the, the kind of the, somewhat, I need to gather. So I'll entertain a motion, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll launch a motion to approve the district plan before that, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I will, second, we'll get side with. All right, I have a motion by Terry and a second by Jeff, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. At eleven fifteen in the morning.
I mean, second.
We will adjourn. So, thank you guys. I know it's a long night walking through and I was probably grilled you more than you probably felt like you'd been grilled in a long while. Thank you. Thank you for collaborating. Thank you all for bringing information together to, to show the, where we're going forward. So thank you all.
I think you guys are armed with such a good plan and such good data that you guys set the bar for improvement way too low. Like, I mean, y'all are, y'all are bad A's. And you can do a lot more than, than, than those four points.
Do we start plugging?